Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Commission. Today is Thursday, April 12th, and it is 6:59. Call the meeting to order. Could you have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Robert Harris. Commissioner Joanne Stephen.
Here.
Commissioner Jeffrey Sims.
Here.
Commissioner Alvin DeGenet.
Here.
Commissioner Ray Baker.
Here.
Vice Chair Patricia Korsak.
Present.
Chair Jeffrey Barnes.
Here.
Thank you. Vice Chair Korsak, could you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on this evening's agenda is the approval of same.
I approve the existing agenda.
Need a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This might be an appropriate time, if you're going to approve the agenda, to acknowledge the request for the continuance, and then you can modify the agenda,
if you're inclined to do that.
And then anybody that's in the public that's waiting for that item would know what you're going to be doing, so.
Okay. All right, so prior to approving the agenda, I have a letter from the applicant for item one, requesting that it be continued to the meeting of April 26th. So, Rick?
I just want to clarify, because if there's going to be an inclination to grant this continuance, you should probably keep it on the agenda and just take it as an agenda item and make a motion to continue. That way, we don't have to renotice and do all that as a new item.
Announce the item and then...
That's correct.
Address the continuance.
You can let the public know what's happening, but I would approve the agenda as stated, if that's the intent.
All right, sounds good. All right, so as you said, we will address the potential continuance later. So at this time, I need a motion and a second for the approval of the agenda.
A second?
Motion from Commissioner Baker, second from Commissioner Sims. Please vote electronically. Waiting for one. There we go. Okay, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. The agenda's approved. Next on the agenda is selection of chairperson and vice chairperson.
We can actually take it out of order and do the continuance.
Yes, sir.
If I could just take a quick second, Chair Barnes. Per your bylaws, the first meeting in April of every year is the appropriate time for the commission as a whole to select a new chairman for the next year, and then also to select a new vice chair. Just some of the requirements that are in your bylaws is that no chairperson can serve more than two consecutive terms in a row as the chairperson, and no vice chairperson can serve more than two consecutive years. You, in your current position as the chairman, are completing your second year, so that would preclude you from being nominated as a chairman for a third year. However, Vice Chair Korsak is only completing her first year as a vice chair, and so she could remain as a vice chair. That's the only restriction, is yours this evening. I just wanted to point that out. The order of business would be for our clerk to take nominations, so if anybody from the commission wants to make nominations, we would take those, and then the commission would vote on those. And we'd select the chair first, and then the new chairman could take nominations for the vice chair.
I know we talked about this the other day, but...
Are you sure he's... this is just his first term?
I think this is just my first.
He went in after Brian.
I...
Not trying to say.
You did only come after Brian? Okay. I apologize if our conversation was wrong there.
We talked about it, and I thought that was correct, too, so.
Okay.
We're both in error.
Then I stand corrected. I was going off of our conversation earlier this week.
I meant to call you, actually, and have us check that.
Okay, thanks. Then, there are no restrictions.
For either office.
The only other restriction is that our alternate commissioners cannot serve as a chairman or a vice chairman. So Commissioner Harris and Commissioner Stephan are not eligible to be selected as a chair or a vice chair.
I can see the disappointment on their face.
Chair, I'd like to put Jeffrey Barnes' name in nomination for the chairperson. Good?
I'd like to second that, because he's finally starting to do a good job at it. Took him a year to get a hang of it, so.
With that resounding vote of confidence, I will accept the nomination.
Do we have to vote?
Yes.
I think we have to vote, because I could lose, potentially.
I'll call a roll call vote.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Robert Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Joanne Stephen.
Yes.
Commissioner Jeffrey Sims.
Yes.
Commissioner Alvin DeGenet.
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Ray Baker, I apologize.
Yes.
Commissioner Patricia Korsak.
Yes.
And Commissioner Jeffrey Barnes.
I abstain.
Good call.
Thank you all for the vote of confidence. I appreciate it. Nominations for vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Patricia Korsak, Commissioner, or currently Vice Chair Patricia Korsak.
Right, Vice Chair.
She's doing a good job, too.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second? Can we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Robert Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Joanne Stephen.
Yes.
Commissioner Jeffrey Sims.
Yes.
Commissioner Alvin DeGenet.
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Jeffrey Barnes.
Yes. Congratulations. You don't have a choice.
Yes, we're fine.
You also didn't get a chance to vote.
I was going to abstain anyway.
All right. Thank you. All right, so we have completed that portion of the agenda. Now, moving on to the consent calendar. There are no items. Next being the approval of minutes. So can we get a motion regarding the minutes?
I'll move the accepted minutes for the last meeting of March 22nd, right?
Correct, yeah, March 22nd. Motion from Commissioner Baker.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Harris. Vote on your screens. The votes have been cast. The motion carries six to zero with one abstention. Thank you. All right. Next comes the public comments portion of the meeting. Any person wishing to address the commission on any matter, either under the public comments section of the agenda or scheduled items or public hearings, must fill out a request to speak form available at the front door. Completed forms should be submitted to the secretary prior to the agenda item being called by the chairperson. In speaking to the commission, please limit your time to three minutes. We have a large crowd tonight, so please be courteous to the other speakers and do your best to limit your time. Do we have any speakers?
We have two. We have Rafael Brugueros and Ken Iglesias.
Mr. Brugueros.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, staff, residents, and our guests. Congratulations to the chair and vice chair. I'm glad to see you once again up there.
Glad that you're getting the hang of it.
It's good, while everyone else is learning also, because next year will be your turn. It's good to have different commissioners take charge of the meeting. I want to talk about, my next thing is to remind the residents of Moreno Valley, especially our new residents that moved into the city in the last year, that we're going to have an export of the firefighters and the police department giving us a demonstration of what they do daily in our city. It's very important to understand what we, the residents of this city, pay for, and what kind of security and safety we receive for our tax dollars, because we do pay quite a bit of money in this city for public service. And that's a good thing, because we're all part of it. Every one of us that's in this building right now, that live in the city of Moreno Valley, are part of this. So if you have kids, grandkids, it's only four hours. Come, support the police department, support the fire department, you know, shake their hands. Let them know that we support them, let them know that we pray for them while they're out there doing their job, their duties. And most of the time, you know, and we know, they don't run the other way. They run in, they don't run out. So we need to keep them always in prayer. And once again, it's a beautiful thing to see all seven chairs now, really. It's been a little while that I haven't seen that, and I'm glad everybody's here. May we have a good meeting tonight, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brugueros. Next speaker?
Good evening, Chair, good evening, Commissioners, good evening, staff, and good evening, residents, if you can hear me right. Okay. Oh, I would like to address, if there are any new house planning lots being built, can you please try to make the sidewalks more wide? Not the sidewalks, but like a more walkable path to Main Street, so it would be easier to go to Main Street than having to walk around down, than having to go left, and right, and left, and right. And secondly, can there be, please, like a 99 cents store within either Stone Ridge or Mono Beach Plaza right there? That would be very nice to have one right there. And thirdly, and lastly, why is the commission planning to do so that most of the residents have fiber optic cable internet within the next five years? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Iglesias. Any other comments, Lips?
No, sir.
All right, very good, thank you. At this time, we will move to the public hearing items. First item on the agenda is PEN 170044, 0045, 0046, plot plan, and a conditional use permit. The applicant is Western State's Engineering. And as was discussed earlier, I have a letter from the applicant requesting that the meeting be continued until, or, excuse me, the item be continued until the meeting of April 26, 2018. So unless there's some objection from the commission, can we get a motion and a second, and a vote to honor that request?
Excuse me, Chair?
Yes.
Before you make a motion on this, you still would need to take public comment on the continuance on... Wouldn't be the five minutes for a public hearing. It would just be the three minutes on the issue of continuance, whether or not. And those people who put their names in to speak on the matter may want to just wait till the meeting comes again in the future, but if they put their names in, I would caution them to continue to allow them to speak.
All right, then before we vote on the request, I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to speak on the item.
Currently, we have four signed up to speak.
There are four speakers on the list. Would you like to speak at this time, or would you like to come back on the 26th when we potentially hear the case? Show of hands, does anyone wish to speak tonight?
I can call off the names if you'd like.
Seeing no hands, we will close the public hearing and move on. No?
We never had a public hearing. We're not opening any public hearing.
You sure you guys don't want to rethink your vote?
It's okay. At this time, it would be proper to entertain a motion to continue.
Okay, thank you, Paul. What he said? A motion to continue.
I so moved.
Motion from Commissioner Baker.
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Korsak. Vice Chair Korsak, apologies. Please vote. Quick, well done. Motion carries seven to zero. The item, item one, will be continued until the meeting of April 26, 2018. Do we need a staff comment or anything? Rick?
No further comment necessary.
Very good, thank you. Next on the agenda, item two, PEN 160127, general plan amendment 0128, specific plan amendment 0129, tentative parcel map 0130, a plot plan. The applicant is David Slosson, and the owner is ROC 3CA Bellagio LLC. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. Our senior planner, Chris Orms, will begin the staff presentation tonight.
Thank you.
I'll begin with, Chair Barnes and members of the Planning Commission, I'll begin with a brief overview of the specific plan amendment. There is also a related general plan amendment and change of zone application as well. The specific plan amendment purposes twofold. First, it includes modifications to the specific plan land use map from the golf course designation to high-density residential for approximately 22 acres. This action still leaves approximately 250 acres that will remain in the golf course designation. The second component of the amendment is to establish regulations and expectations with regard to restoring the integrity of the golf course designation within the specific plan. Since the golf course closed, the golf course and clubhouse have been in a deteriorating condition. For the purpose of rehabilitating the golf course, the specific plan amendment includes a language that ensures the golf course is rehabilitated and includes provisions that building permits will not be issued until the 18-hole golf course and landscape areas have been restored and the golf course is playable. And this is also identified in the conditions of approval. To further ensure the standards described in the golf course designation in the specific plan, the specific plan also includes language that the developer enter into a maintenance agreement for long-term maintenance of the golf course. This is for a period of 10 years. So the intent is to keep the golf course in a park, or the golf course, should it fail later, that at least it will be kept in a park-like condition for a period of 10 years. And these requirements are identified in conditions 16 and 17 before you this evening. The developer had, or held several well-attended community outreach meetings, most of which were also attended by staff. The most recent meeting was this last Monday night. Gabriel Diaz, associate planner, will provide an overview of the proposed development project on the 22 acres.
Thank you, Chris, and Chairman and Commissioners. The applicant is requesting a plot plan application for 417 apartment units on a 22-acre parcel, which was formerly a driving range. The apartments consist of 18 residential buildings, a clubhouse building. There are, we do have a site plan up here that shows the 18 buildings. We do have a proposal for the architecture, which consists of two- and three-story buildings. And due to the great difference, there's a combination of two- and three-story buildings and three- and four-story buildings being used on the side. Here we have a two-story building, three-story building, and a combination of two and three... three-story building and a combination of three- and four-story buildings, and the clubhouse building. In addition, there is a parcel map for the apartments. The project is located southeasterly of the intersection of JFK and Moreno Beach, adjacent to the existing apartment buildings. The proposed apartment will provide on-site parking consistent with our municipal code. The apartment will have, the apartments will have three access points. The main entrance will be off of Moreno Beach Drive. The secondary access will be off of JFK, and this will be a shared access with the existing golf course clubhouse. The third access would be for emergency onlys, and this would be off of Championship Drive. Environmentally, an initial study was prepared by CASC Engineering and Consulting in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines. The initial study provides information in support of the findings that mitigation, that a mitigated negative declaration serves as the appropriate secret documentation for the proposed project. Also, we have provided two agency letters that have been submitted as part of the record. And I believe those were provided right before the meeting to the Commissioners. Items that staff and the applicants have worked through. The developer has moved the project away from the single-family homes. We'll go back to the site plan. In an effort to mitigate the size of the apartments close to single-family homes. The closest home is about 165 feet from the property line to the face of the apartment building. And that would be the southeast corner of the property. Another item, the developer preserved the on-site out, rock-out crappies, and per the soils report, there is no blasting anticipated, so hopefully, construction is quiet. Also, as part of the conditions of approval, the hours of operation for construction is being provided. A traffic study was submitted with mitigations being proposed. There are two traffic signals being constructed as part of the project. One is at the intersection of Moreno Beach and Championship Drive. And then the other one is being proposed at JFK and Stevenson's, at the golf course clubhouse entrance. There's also a condition of approval that there be stacking on Moreno Beach at the access gate to the project. Public notification, public was sent, public notices was sent to all property owners, posted on-site, and published in the Press Enterprise. I've received about six calls recently, and most of them have the common question of how would this affect their property? Staff recommendations, staff recommends that the planning commission take the recommendation, the recommended actions as proposed by staff. This concludes staff presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to...
Do you have any questions of staff?
Yeah. Thank you, Paul. Anyone have any questions?
I was wondering if we know what the current occupancy levels are of apartments in Moreno Valley right now? Do we have any idea? I'm just trying to put it in perspective as to how many apartments we might have that are already empty, and any idea of how many units are under construction throughout the city.
I don't have any specific information about the occupancy rate. I do know that it's fairly low. In other words, that the housing is impacted. There are two apartment projects under construction in the city. One is very far on the northwest part of town. One is towards the southern edge of the Moreno Valley Ranch. Those are the only ones under construction. There are a couple others on the books.
I have a question. I'd like to know, do we have presently in Moreno Valley any four-story apartment buildings?
Yes, I believe there are three, there are a lot of three-story. There are some with four-story apartments.
Any other questions? I have one. Could we go back to that site plan that you had on the screen? The area labeled Rancho Belago Phase 1, what is that? Is that part of the existing development?
That is correct. That's the existing apartment buildings.
I thought, I was just looking at the image and wondering why it looked different.
The owners of that apartment complex are proposing Phase 2.
Okay. But those ones that are outside, that are labeled Phase 1, those exist. Those are built, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. In looking at that same image, that portion of the golf course that's just north of the clubhouse, that's the first hole. Is that being altered by this development?
Yes, there will be some alteration to that hole. And I think the developer brought the proposed golf course operator here to maybe describe what will go on as far as changes to the golf course. Their proposal, as far as changes to the golf course, is to make it an easier-playing site. And as far as grading, grading is proposed as minimal so far.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Any other questions?
Yes, I do. There is an area that's labeled soccer field, and I believe that's going to go along what is currently hole nine. But I know there's going to be alterations to that hole, according to the plan. And there's also homes along that area. But if there's a tee box going on that top end, it's probably by where you see it listed as A1. My thought is, it looks like there would have to be some type of netting, high netting, to protect the people in the soccer field. Or it looks like here, the homes that would be labeled Type 2, which could further block view or make it a little less sightly. So is there anything in the plans that's going to put up some type of netting or anything to protect people on that soccer field from getting hit by a golf ball?
At this point, I don't believe that shown on the plan will defer to the applicant perhaps to address that question.
There are also, what you see there is a flat piece of paper, but in reality, the golf course, the existing driving range is semi-flat and goes up in elevation towards Championship Drive. But then there, you got two adjacent golf courses or holes to the east and west. And there is a, it is mounted, and that's how they kind of protect or kind of guide you to where you should be shooting your golf ball to. But the, guide you. But the developer could speak more on behalf of how they plan on relating the two.
All right.
If I may just chime in a little bit on the golf course. The golf course development plans are subject to a subsequent review, so we don't have all the specifics of the golf course laid out yet. What the applicant is interested in doing is getting the entitlement and the specific plan amendment done for the 417 units that are proposed. He's agreed to the terms that Mr. Orms be laid out with regard to the specific plan amendment in order to ensure that the golf course will be developed as a first order of business. But the actual details of where a net might be or the direction of flight for the golf balls, that'll be subject to a subsequent review. So if we go into a lot more details on that, I just wanted to let you know that upfront, that we're not going to be in a position to answer those very specific questions.
Commissioner Sims.
Is there any existing financing, like a CFD or Assessment District, that's over this entire property ownership that's of question right now? That, and if this change of use of the golf course property went to a high-density type setup, if there is an existing assessment assigned, does that change how the other property owners within the specific plan or within the financing... the other property owners within the specific plan or, or within the financing district would?
Yes, actually, that question came up from a resident today, and I followed up with Candace Gassell, who's the special districts manager. It, it would have, this project would have no bearing on, uh, residents' existing, uh, assessments. Uh, it would actually contribute to some of the, um, districts for landscaping and that. So it would actually help the situation with regard to adding some funds across some of those districts that it would be required to participate in. And those are identified in the conditions of approval.
So was there a CFD or anything, and, and has all the bonds been retired?
Well, when you say a, a CFD for, I mean, there, there's a CFD for various purposes in the area, but the site itself is not part of a CFD, the golf course, for maintenance. It was privately owned, as I understand it. And so therefore, there, there, there's no finance mechanism for the golf course maintenance.
Any other questions?
And, I'm sorry, just, I, you know, is, do you have a map? I, it's been many, many years since I played at, uh, at the ranch. And so which, which of the courses, which courses are which? I can't remember. I remember the mountain nine, 'cause I could never hit the little tripod green, but, uh...
I can tell you, the mountain nine is the, the holes that are most close to the southern edge along the open space. The valley nine are the homes, are the, uh, the holes that are most represented in the top part of that, uh, exhibit that's on the, on the overhead there. And then the lake nine are the nine holes that are closest to the entrance to Lake Paris. So if that gives you some orientation, that's how we kinda describe them.
Is there an exhibit that shows what property is being taken from the golf course itself? I know, obviously, the driving range is going away, but what's the impact on, on one and nine? Is there anything that shows that limit?
Well, this, in, in concept, shows the project site relative to the open space and golf course areas. When you say one and nine, you're talking about the holes?
Yeah.
Uh, with regard to the specific alterations of holes and that, again, it's design aspects, as Rick mentioned, would, would come a little bit later. But I think the applicant and golf course operator might be able to speak to that.
Okay, alright. And then another question, as it relates to the financing or the maintenance commitment that's being made. You said it was being, it, should the golf course fail, the developer's going to maintain the golf course in a park-like condition? So it wouldn't be playable as a golf course. They would just keep it green, green in mode?
Yes, and it wouldn't be the developer maintaining it. Uh, the monies are put into a fund, which are, are kept by the city, as I understand it. So it's not the developer necessarily. The developer's putting the funds or advancing it.
Okay. So... Okay, nevermind. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Harris.
Uh, I just wondered about the regrading of the golf course. If that's going to do anything to affect the character and the desirability of the golf course?
We did, uh, look at that. It was, the, uh, the impacts of the golf course grading, what were considered as part of the environmental review. Again, the, the intent is that the grading is rather minor in the scheme of things. So, uh, it makes it more playable. It's not intended that it would affect the integrity of the appearance of the golf course.
If, I mean, if I can speak to, just a little bit also from a, a staff perspective and the conversations we've had with the applicant. Um, I think Mr. Ormsby's correct, that the applicant would probably be best to, in a best position to address your, your, your question very specifically. But the intent and the history on this golf course, the golf course was designed as a very challenging golf course. It had a very recognized name, and Pete Dye, who was the golf course architect, that architect has a, a good reputation. And as a good reputation, just playing the name of a, you know, Pete Dye-designed golf course can draw certain people to wanna come and play there. The other challenge, though, is that a Pete Dye golf course is very challenging, and it may limit the number of people that would have a good experience playing there. And in our conversations with the applicant was that, that may be one of the reasons why it wasn't getting as high a volume of use because of the hard, or the difficulty of play. So when they've discussed with us, and, and they've taken me on a tour of the golf course, they've showed me where they wanna try and flatten some of the golf course areas out to make it more playable. But in my opinion, in that drive on the golf course, they're gonna maintain the integrity of the amount of, of land that would still be dedicated for golf course. Their intent is to bring it back to a, a nicely, uh, landscaped and well-kept golf course. So the appearance and the things that we've been, you know, working with them to do is to achieve a very high-quality experience for people who aren't necessarily golfers, but just drive by the area and wanna see a nice landscape restored. So those are the things that we're interested in seeing. But with regard to the playability of the golf course, each individual golf, golfer will make a different determination. And so I'd like the golf course architect to maybe give a little bit more description of, of why they think certain things need to be changed.
Okay, a, a couple more questions. The, uh, the nine-hole, uh, course that will be turned into an exercise area, who has access to that, and how do they get access to that? Is there, um...
Well, we can fill you in on what staff knows about that. It's my understanding is going to be fully gated, that it would be basically sort of a pay-for-play. I, I mean, you would, you would have to have an access card to it, and you would do that through the golf course clubhouse, through the golf course operator. Uh, there, there might be some, they had mentioned, there, there might be some special rates and things for people that live in the ranch, and the, the developer can provide some elaboration on that.
Do we have any expectations of how many people will be utilizing that? As a golf course, it's probably fairly quiet. Not real loud, but if there's a bunch of people back there, um, exercising, playing sports and stuff, it may generate more noise.
I, I would defer to the applicant on that. It, the appearance, based on the description and the activities that are being provided there, would be that it's pretty low-profile.
Okay, the other thing, uh, I, I was listening to the, um, applicant, um, at the other night, and he was talking about, uh, green grass conditions similar to city parks at drought stage. And maybe, I don't know if he meant to say that, or, and I guess that should be something I should ask him, 'cause you guys probably don't know.
Well, we certainly have looked into the standards with regard to what, what it means in terms of, of a park-like setting and, and, you know, this green grass, uh, condition. Uh, you know, obviously, there are some challenges in defining that, and we can certainly have, it may be appropriate to have the applicant speak to that. And it's something, a discussion that's ongoing with the applicant as to what exactly that means.
Thank you. We have quite a few items that are stacked up for the applicant. Should we? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just, real quick, I think it's important. On that item where you said a representative from the developer's team made a comment to that effect, I think it would be appropriate, if you need to get more clarification on that, would be coming from them. 'Cause that, that's not something that, that we have the answer for you.
Commissioner Sims.
Has there been a, um, there's preliminary grading plans, but has there been any, like, sightlines where, or, uh, aerial, aerial mapping that, or computer-generated mapping that would show, like, looking from different cross-sections from Championship Drive or different areas within existing residences, across what the roof lines would look like with the new grading in the apartments?
There have been, uh, cross-sections done. Uh, with regard to more sophisticated, uh, line of site studies, uh, we would need to defer to the architect for response.
Alright, um, if we don't have a question at the moment, let's bring the applicant forward, and he can speak to these items that have been, uh, punted over to him.
Well, thank you, thank you very much, uh, members of the planning commission. Congratulations on, on, on your appointments, and I guess we're pretty early in your, in the process, and I'm, I'm glad all seven are here. My name's Eric Hefner. I'm, uh, the head of development for Bridge Investment Group. Before we get started, I mean, I've, have, the only folks I've met on the, on the dais is, is, uh, this gentleman here when he came to our meeting Monday night. Uh, I haven't met any of you all before. Maybe I have, but I just don't recall. But I, before we get started about details, this, let's figure out who we're dealing with, okay? People, and, and, uh, who Bridge Investment Group is and who Eric Hefner is. Just a quick background, my background, I, I come from a family of educators. My mom was a elementary school teacher for forty-three years. My wife is a kindergarten school teacher for years. My daughter now is teaching high school English in the Bronx in New York. And my family and my background is really, it's, it's, it's all about being firm with, with your students, but compassionate with their needs. And so we, we try to carry that same type of, um, standard into some of our developments. In other words, we're trying to be firm for investors, so they'll invest with us, so we continue to make them their return on their investment, but compassionate to the people that we really, that are really affected. In this particular case, our driving range is bordered by a number of homes less than three figures. Okay? Whereas the balance of the golf course is bordered by homes in the four-figure range. So we've, we really tried to go out of our way to, uh, come up with a site plan that was gonna mitigate any of the views thresholds for the folks that are living right around the driving range. Matter of fact, there's some commentary out there that it kept on changing. The site plans kept on changing. Well, yeah, we probably had eleven different iterations of site plans that we went through. But basically, it was because of all the different input we had from the community residents in trying to make it work. At some point, we had to say, okay, this is it, guys. This is the one we need to do. And so we did it. The one we showed to the community was in December of twenty-seven, twenty-sixteen, right at the end there of the year, as, at Christmas party. And when we finished that presentation, the audience applauded our, our, our efforts. So we went on with that, uh, with that site plan and went down and fine-tuned. And every time you do a site plan, understand you also have to bring the engineers in to make sure the building that you're designing works. And so it's a pretty costly change, about fifty thousand dollars for every different site plan that we got into position to present to the community. Costs us over fifty, fifty-five thousand dollars, 'cause you have to pay not just the architect, but the engineer. So it's a pretty costly process and a timely process. But we went out of our way to listen to the, the balance of the community and try to meet their needs. If, if we were, as some other developers, if we just pushed through our initial site plan and we were approved, then we'd be under construction right now, but we're not. So I wanna, I wanna stress that, that every little detail, as far as the distance between the, the buildings and the existing homes, the view corridors, the view sheds, uh, we've tried to mitigate. Yes, it's true, the people that live right around the, the driving range will see the apartments there. We do have the, uh, the drawings that show the perspectives of what they'll be able to see. It's also true, they'll still see mountains, they'll still see snow-covered peaks, et cetera, et cetera. So that's kinda what I wanted to get into as far as the compassion part about it. Bridge Investment Group, who is Bridge Investment Group? Well, I've known the founders of Bridge Investment Group for over thirty-plus years. I remember when Dan and Chris started their little company in nineteen ninety, nineteen eighty-eight, eighty-seven in Salt Lake City, where they bought three foreclosed condominiums in, in a place called American Towers. Chris was working for AT&amp;T at the time, and Dan was working for a banker on, on the foreclosure side. Dan kept on doing workouts for all the different, uh, developers who lost money in that recession. And then finally, Dan said, wait a second, let me go ahead and buy these three and try it. So Chris gave him the dough from his, uh, his pension fund, and that started. Then all of a sudden, they made some money, then they brought other AT&amp;T pension fund members to put money in. Well, anyway, today, that company has now grown to over eighteen-hundred-and-fifty employees, and we have over eight billion dollars of real estate asset that we manage in several different funds. And the company has thrived because of their philanthropic basis and what they said. Chris's line is, I think, is something that's genius myself. The statement we do with, with our company is, is, you can make money by doing the wrong things sometimes. You can still go in, you can get the better end of the deal and still make money off of it. But you will always make money if you're always doing the right things. And that's our motto, what we do as a company. That's why when we came and looked at this opportunity here, this golf course slash Moreno Valley slash Moreno Valley Ranch, and what was going on in the area, we got pretty excited. We had bought the existing Rancho Balago apartments in two thousand and fifteen. And while we were in escrow on that property, we're, first of all, we were excited about buying an apartment project. It was adjacent to a golf course. But while we were in the middle of due diligence on that property, um, the golf course closed. Couldn't ever find out what was going on with it. We thought that's gonna be a major disruptor for our apartment community, but we were, we were moving forward. That's when we came in and we talked with some city councilman, uh, city staff members and some council members at the time, just to ask them what their thoughts, their visions were of what they'd like to see, basically get the golf course back open. And then we see what we do. So we did our studies on that, and, um, the issue about a golf course is, is the, our principles of our company, not the funds, but the principles of our company owned, at that time, three different golf courses around the western United States. They'd built one, and they'd, uh, added on to one, and they bought an existing one. So we had, they knew a lot about golf courses. That was a good thing, but also knew it was a bad thing, because they were losing money on every golf course they had. So we took a real strong look at it, and we're trying to think, what could happen to make this work for the community, make it work for our apartments, so we can make an investment? And we were just like the homeowners up all on the area, watching that golf course deteriorate, watching the property values deteriorate with everything else that was happening there. So we put together a plan, well, let's see if we can go ahead and take that driving range, about twenty-two acres, it's adjacent to our existing apartment project. And let's see if we can expand our existing apartment project into that driving range, because that would be the economic driver to allow the golf course to be reopened. Because a golf course doesn't make it, and that's pretty obvious. It doesn't make it on its own. Okay, well, we had a fund, and the fund that this, this, uh, Balago One was in, the reserve at Rancho Balago, is in fund, our fund three. That fund only allows us to own apartments or office buildings. It doesn't allow us to own or run a golf course. It does allow us to own land that has a potential to be expanded in, by apartments, and that's how we got around the, the legal challenge of why we still, why we bought the land. We bought the land. But we knew we needed to get a golf course operator to come in to eventually take it off of our hands. So we met with a number of operators, uh, throughout Southern California. We tried to sell the property, just, we'll just do our apartments, and you, listen, you guys buy the land, rest of the golf course. You couldn't even give away that property for a buck because of the ongoing cost it would take to bring it back up, up to speed. Millions of dollars to bring it back up to speed. So fortunately, though, we found a golf course operator. We've, Mark Stevens, this was CSC Golf Management. Mark's background was, he handled all the golfing operations for Millen Homes over the years. So we hired Mark to come in and kinda be our onsite manager to try to get that property at least maintained. Our, we had a public meeting, public hearing on August sixteenth, about six months after we acquired the property. And we tried to share with the community what we were gonna do there. We had over five hundred people at that meeting. And I'm surprised I'm still alive after that meeting, quite frankly. But there was, there was a lot of good things that came out of that meeting. The number-one thing I saw that came out of that meeting was the passion of the residents around that community. Now, a lot of that passion was directed at us in a negative light, which is understandable. If I had bought a house up there on a golf course, paid extra dollars for that beautiful view, and all of a sudden, it's gone brown, and I've got coyotes and gophers and snakes and everything else going on, and really, nobody caring about me, I'd be really upset. So I fully empathize where these folks are coming from. But then throughout that meeting, finally, finally, somebody stood up in that meeting and said, now, wait a second, guys. You guys are all over this new developer, our new neighbor, who's only owned this property for six months, and you're blaming him stuff for that's happened over the last eight, nine years. Well, finally, I, I was able to see some sunshine in that meeting. I said, okay, there's something we can do here, okay? And we understand, the first thing that impressed me was the passion of the community. And that's something that I, quite frankly, I learned that from my mom too, is you're gonna do something, you better be passionate about it. And I am passionate about this development here. That's why sometimes when we have meetings with some, with some of the constituents in the area and some of the residents in the area, they see me get a little upset about something because they just, they get hung up on this one little item here that may be a view. But the bigger picture is, is that the golf course is gonna be open for play, back for the community to enjoy. So, anyway, Mark Stevens led us to Diamond Golf. Diamond Golf is headed up by Sal Rodriguez. Sal Rodriguez, his history was, thirty-five, forty years ago, he was working for Jack Nicklaus on their golf courses. And he built Jack Nicklaus golf courses back then. Then a couple of years after that, he's, went to Mr. Nicklaus and said, Mr. Nicklaus, I'm, I'm gonna leave and start my own company, so I, thank you very much. And he said, well, that's fine, you can start your own company, but I'm hiring you to build my golf courses. So, Sal has built golf courses around the world. If you go down to Cabo, Quivera, Palmaia, it just goes on and on, the list of the names of the golf courses that he's developed and built and to rave reviews. So, Sal is, had been doing that for thirty-some-odd years. His son Saul Rodriguez is right here right now and Saul is kinda the next generation of what's going on with Diamond Golf. The game plan has changed in golf industry. I wish Tiger Woods had won the Masters last weekend, that would've been really great for the game of golf again, please get people really, really excited. But the youth of the, in the golf is really starting to come back, it's starting to come back, but it died, it died really hard. But Saul's new business model with their company is to go out and find golf courses that have good bones to them that have closed for economic reasons, okay? And interestingly enough, even though this is a Pete Di golf course, more than one out of two of the Pete Di golf courses that were built around the world are in the same condition that Moreno Valley Ranch is right now. And the reason is, is because they're very difficult golf courses to play, which means that average twenty handicapper doesn't have a lot of fun playing out there, which means they only come out on the golf nowadays or the special days or whatever, when you get two-for-one and there's not enough revenue generated to maintain that golf course. And because the golf course itself is such a difficult golf course to, to play, the maintenance really requires to have hand tools to go in there and cut it down. You can't cut it with a huge big lawn mowers like you see on a lot of these other golf courses. So, that's what Saul's and Mark's vision is on a golf course, is to make it easier to play, not only to make it more enjoyable for the golfer, but also to make it more maintenance-friendly so that it can survive on forty-five to fifty-five dollar green fee rounds. That's the whole purpose of why they're there. Now, the golf course itself, it's twenty-seven holes. It's difficult enough right now to make sense on an eighteen-hole golf course, much less a twenty-seven-hole golf course. So, what we're gonna do with the, the other nine, and we've decided to go with the lake nine on this, is to make that into a exercise facility with a running track and it's also gonna be set up for foot golf and so, and, and frisbee golf. We'll have workout stations throughout that as well. There is a, a golf, an existing golf cart path that goes around that nine holes, which ironically is a five K. So, that works out pretty well. I've met with the community over there and they really like the idea of having a park there, but they're really concerned about the security of the park. People parking in their, in their neighborhoods, walking onto this park, et cetera, and just really over-parking their neighborhood and not, no control on the golf course. So, what we're committed to do is fence that entire lake nine golf course and also put gates at each one of the entrance with a keypad, electronic keypad. And it's gonna be a pay-for-play on that lake nine exercise golf course. The people that wanna come access that golf course need to go to the golf clubhouse and pay a monthly fee to get the electronic key card to keep it open. So, that's the security on there. We're hoping that there's enough revenue generated on that lake nine to keep that golf, keep that area green and irrigated, et cetera. The greens on this, it's not gonna be a putting green type surface, it's gonna be just a regular grass green there for the foot golf and the frisbee golf. As part of this transaction though, with Diamond Golf and Bridge, Bridge is agreeing to, to contribute twenty-five percent of the ongoing maintenance fee for the lake nine. That maintenance charge, that maintenance fee is coming off of our operations from our apartments, okay? So, that's built into our performance where we're paying that twenty-five percent of that lake nine for the maintenance costs. Hopefully, the other seventy-five percent will be covered by the fees that are generated for that nine. In addition to that, which is another thing that Bridge Investment Group has done, as I mentioned, if we do things the right way, you're always gonna make money. It's a key concept and the right way is not just numbers, it's about people. A number of our communities are, are in areas where latchkey kids, where kids come home from school, their parents are still working and they have nothing to do. The kids go to school on their own in the morning after their parents leave for work. So, we actually started an outfit called Project Access, which is in Orange County, based in Orange County. And now they're in sixty percent of our apartment projects across the country. We started that in the mid-nineties, started it in Santa Ana with the first one. Now, Project Access has just done a great job helping the latchkey kids at all of our residents. Now, there's twofold reasons to do that. One is the right thing to do because you help the families out that are your residents and two, guess what, they wanna renew and stay there. They don't wanna move to another apartment project. They're happy where they are because their kids are being serviced, so everything works out. So, as an apartment operator, we don't need to necessarily now go in and redo an apartment to get it ready for a new resident to go in, so we end up making lower maintenance fees because the same family's there by providing after-school services for their kids. It's amazing how that works out. So, we came here also to Moreno Valley, listening to Mayor Gutierrez and in his wish for having youth services, Moreno Valley with the need for youth services. As we looked around the demographics of the area, holy smokes, these parents getting on the road at six o'clock in the morning, getting home at six-thirty at night, what are their kids doing in between? Well, we saw a huge opportunity here with the relationship that we have with PGA of America and our three other golf courses and the relationship I have with Boys and Girls Club, when I sat on the board of directors for the San Diego Boys and Girls Club in San Diego County. We said, well, let's see if we can put the Boys and Girls Club of America along with PGA of America, bring them together and come and use our site here at Moreno Valley as an incubator to foster all the good things you learn about golf and lifestyle skills. At the same time, having a place for the children of our community to go to after school before their parents get home. Well, we put out an RFP to three different groups, four different groups actually, and we decided to go with Boys and Girls Club and PGA of America because Boys and Girls Club has a terrific fundraising mechanism and PGA is dedicated to this program. As a matter of fact, guys, this program is the model program for PGA of America and Boys and Girls Club to take it nationwide. And it's gonna be based upon the success that's happening here in Moreno Valley. So, when we, when we talk about the apartments in the driving range, this project is so much bigger, so much bigger than it is just about the apartments in the driving range. The golf course itself is gonna be a fabulous place. Another thing that Mayor Gutierrez maybe went, if you listened on is, is radio town hall meeting he had just last week or ten days ago. Another thing he mentioned, somebody called up and said, you know, Mr. Mayor, we just don't have any, referred to it as a high-end restaurant or a white tablecloth type restaurant here in Moreno Valley. Well, our operators, Mark Stevens and Saul, we're gonna take that restaurant that was in our clubhouse there and that's gonna become your white table type restaurant, high-end restaurant there. We're gonna have, it's, we're gonna have top-notch facilities, banquets, fundraising communities. It's gonna be a community center for the Moreno Valley Ranch area, which there is no place out there for a community center right now for a meeting. We've already had a number of meetings out there. We've had fundraisers out there, we've had, geez, Mark had his wife that was out there giving a heart resuscitation CPR training to people. So, we are out there, we've got churches that wanna come and be there on a Sunday morning, which is great because that helps the church out, also helps out the banquet facilities there in the morning, et cetera, et cetera. So, it all comes together. While I was on that, there was something, I had a great thought, sorry, just skipped my words. But, let me, let me, if I could, go through some of the other benefits that we bring to the table for the community at large. Number one, we get the golf course back, okay? Uh, the golf course is gonna, as a matter of fact, we want this golf course to be open by the end of this year, all right? We had hoped to been, been in front of planning commission about a year ago. But because of the changes that we made on site plans, again, back and forth and back and forth and back and forth, after listening to the residents, we got delayed. Because we wanted the golf course opened up at the end of this year. We were actually planning to have the Boys and Girls Club beginning in the fall of twenty seventeen, but now it's been pushed back to fall of twenty eighteen. I keep looking back here because we have the Boys and Girls Club representative here as well. Anyway, so, where was I Diana? My wife's here, she's, where was I? Oh, thank you, right here. So, the benefits, so the number one is we get the golf course back, okay? And just so you know, we took a risk with CSC and Diamond Golf. Together, we have already invested six hundred thousand dollars right now into the redoing of the greens and the tee boxes. So, we can have the golf course open by the end of the year on both the mountain nines and the valley nine. That work has already begun. Quite frankly, if, if we get shot down, we're stopping the trucks tomorrow and that's another six hundred grand out of our pocket that we just lost. But we, we did that, it's a sign of good faith, that we put in our money where our mouth is and that you can trust us that we're gonna do what we say we're gonna do and when we do it. That's why we've done that and it's, we've shown that. The second benefit, as I mentioned earlier, we're gonna get that exercise course and that lake nine going there. The deal about the lake nine, we are not gonna go in there and destroy that at all. The idea is, is if the golf course comes back strong enough, that the lake nine can always be turned into another nine holes. So, we're gonna keep its main apparatus there, but we need to make some revenue off of that in the interim. Boys and Girls Club, I already mentioned, the PGA, the white, the restaurant is already mentioned. Could I get that video up to the back that we were talking about? Part of, thank you, that's, this, this is our special event centers that's just outside of our clubhouse. This is, this is a concept right now, what we're planning, go ahead to the next slide, please. You have the next slide there? Okay, that's good. So, this is the idea that we're looking to have. This is gonna be just outside the clubhouse, between the clubhouse and the number one tee box. This is gonna be a place for weddings, outdoor amenities, cons, kind of quinceeras and a fun place to be, right next to our white tablecloth restaurant. So, that's the concept that we have. Now, that's in conceptual stage, but I tell you what, Saul says we're gonna do it. Right there, there's a man. Okay, thank you for, for that. The other thing is, that's gonna happen is people are talking about traffic and the circulation, et cetera, it's gonna, the traffic circulation is gonna improve in this area. Why? Because we're contributing over five million dollars to the traffic improvements in this area. Five million dollars, you're going right to traffic, I've got that from Mr. Ormsby today. On top of that, we're putting in two four-way stoplights. One at the corner of Championship Drive and Moreno Beach Road and the other one at the entrance to our golf course right off of JFK. The other community benefit that Mayor Gutierrez has talked a lot about and the city council's talking about is higher mobile. Mark Stevens has reached out to higher mobile already. We have about thirty to fifty employment op, job opportunities at our golf course and, and at our restaurant as well as our apartment project. It fits in perfectly for the higher mobile program, for kids just getting out of the high school area, getting started on their, on, getting on their feet. It's a, it's a great program and it'll be great to be done at our golf course and operation. The other community benefit is that the city's gonna see increased sales taxes from the revenue of our golf course and our restaurant. Just to give you an example in, in the way cash flows work off of a golf course, more than fifty percent of the revenues off of a golf course, successful golf course, comes from the restaurant operation and retail operation from that golf course. But we're gonna have a first-class restaurant facility as well as retail being sold at the, at the golf course pro shop. The ninth ben, benefit is something that I think really holds, I hope, true and dear to everybody that lives around the golf course. If your house doesn't increase in property value after the golf course is open for play, there's something of much bigger wrong going on in the world than us putting our golf course in there. It is, it's proven fact that homes on a golf course and operating golf course where it's a benefit should be more valuable than it is the way it was when we bought the property two years ago. So, it's been a long road for us to get here. We bought the property over two years ago. We've had up to fifteen community meetings. We've had eleven different site plans put together. As a matter of fact, the most recent site plan I, we had to scramble to get in for this meeting. Most recent site plan change came about because of we had an observation by two different Indian tribes. They found some, some pretty significant, at least what we felt was significant findings in a rock outcropping right by our existing golf clubhouse, right adjacent to our existing apartments. And wouldn't you know it, that particular spot is where we had planned to put a building, but right behind it was a parking lot. So, we simply swapped them, put the building on the parking lot and now we're gonna celebrate that artifact find area that we found on that site and it's gonna be right in the middle of the promenade and it's gonna have a little bit histor, history of Moreno Valley right there. Couple of other things. About commitment, putting our money where our mouth is, doing what we say we're gonna do. I already mentioned about the fact we put the six hundred grand into that, in the beginning of the tee boxes and the greens. We have also, we paid initially for the golf course, we've also been maintaining it for two years. The thing we heard in that meeting in August in twenty sixteen, this place, you can't keep this thing maintained for, with the three guys you have. We were constantly getting called to the co-compliance officer. Matter of fact, he was on a first-name basis with Mark and Otto and Arturo and everybody else on, on our site. And, and Dan Stanger, who was the other, other co-founder with Chris Young that I mentioned to you, Dan was at that meeting, he said, Eric, I don't care what it takes, get this thing cut down, mowed down, get it done. That's when we hired Diamond Golf to come in and mow down all those weeds. While they were mowing down all the weeds, we were trimming all the trees and all those kinds of things, Diamond Golf was proven to us at, at Bridge that they're men of their word. They went beyond, way far beyond what their contract was to trim the golf course for us and they were doing a forensic analysis on the golf course at that time to find out what was wrong with the sprinkling system, the irrigation system, all the electronics that go through there, et cetera. And we had a great forensic analysis from them on that. So, we hired them. So, that, we're a couple of million dollars later since we bought the property in February of twenty sixteen. We've put our money where our mouth is, we told them what we're, what we were gonna do. The next thing that we made a commitment to the community was, is to show you how serious we are about the golf course. We are not gonna go vertical with construction on our apartment units until the golf course is open for play. We've asked to be able to go horizontal to begin the grading operation on our site. We'd like to get our way on that as soon as possible because the export soils from our grading operation on the apartment site is gonna be used to go in the fairways of number one and number nine and number two mountain, okay? We wanna be able to get those spoils, they call them spoils, exports soils to those spots. The idea is, is that none of those trucks have to go on the highways to transport the soil anywhere. A lot of times when you have these construction projects and you have exported soil, the community is risked and harmed because these huge trucks are dropping dirt everywhere on the streets. because these huge trucks are dropping dirt everywhere on the streets. Our game plan is just to take the dirt from a driving range and spread it out to the adjoining holes. So that's the one commitment, and we, we won't go vertical with those apartments till you see that golf course open. Right now, we're planning on that golf course being open by the end of the year. When the golf course is open, the full clubhouse will be totally completed. The exercise park will be totally completed. As part of the, as part of the improvements, we are gonna go and repair all the fences, right now that look like a busted jailhouse going down JFK Moreno Beach Road. We're also gonna put in new fencing on Championship Drive, on both sides of the street there. So those residents don't have to have all the misdemeanor break-ins that they're seeing occur out there now, and occurred before when the golf course was open. So we're committing to that fencing around there. Again, putting our money where our mouth is, because none of that, like, none of the apartments going vertical where we make money on happened until we make those improvements for the community. Okay? Another item that we're going on, it's true, the golf course went dead once, it could go dead again. Golf courses are not in, in demand, although, like I said, the curves start in the bottom out. Frankly, I think the community at large in the area here is, we're fortunate that we bought our apartments, and we're fortunate that we have, know enough about golf, enough about what we're doing, to hire the right guys to get the golf course open. So we can see our values of our apartments are gonna increase, because the amenity package is right there. The neighborhood, the neighbors in the area should, I hope, feel that same sense of relief that somebody's there to take care of their property values, i.e. getting the golf course open for play and making that commitment. If the golf course should close, okay, heaven forbid, but it should, it could. Just so you know, we're putting in, I'm gonna talk dollars, three million dollars into the golf course right now to get this thing rehabbed, just on those eighteen holes. That's three million dollars. We're putting in another two million dollars in the lake nine and in the clubhouse facilities. Those are all dollars again being spent before any of our vertical construction begins. We're putting our money where our mouth is. And lastly, upon the opening of the golf course, somebody wanted two point two million from us. Now, we're gonna do better than that. We're gonna put two point five million into an escrow account with the city. That money is gonna be held by the city, and then for a ten-year period. So what ends up happening is every year that golf course remains open, they'll refund us our two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year, but you, the community's assured that if the golf course closes, the grass will remain green. Definition of what is drought green, et cetera, so I have to go with your definition from the city. That's where we got it from, I don't know what that means. All I know is, that was what we talked about, a commitment, green grass is green grass. So, but it's not gonna be golf course, but it will be green and maintained out of that escrow account. So as we're putting our money where our mouth is, we are on a tight timeframe to make that golf course open by the end of the year. And with that, thanks for listening to me. I hope I wasn't too long-winded, et cetera, but I wanted to dispel some rumors, and I wanted to make sure everybody understood, not just you folks, but all you folks outside here, and the people that are watching on TV, et cetera. Okay, I'd be happy to answer any questions, I have my full team here to answer any specific questions, all the way down to the environmental issues, the bunnies and the bugs and all that kind of stuff, right Stephanie? You know that. So, believe me, there's a lot of, lot of deals, so, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions of the applicant? I have ones. Mr. Harris?
Uh, thank you. I, I just wondered if you had had three previous golf courses that you had lost money in, why would you have been eyeing a golf course to build apartments?
That is an excellent question, and that is the same question that was posed by their, our principals of our company when we came up with this idea. What the heck are we doing? No doubt about it, and I'll tell you what the answer was. And it goes right back to the very first meeting, before we even bought the golf course, I went to a meeting here in the city chambers, not in the, it was over in your convention center type area there. And there was, is a meeting, uh, is being hosted by the city staff, invited residents in to find out what is going on with the city. What can we do to help, I think that, that was the premise, what can we hear from the citizens of the city? What can we do to make this thing better, a better town for you? The first two questions were about the library. You know, we need another library, now you all have another library. The third question asked, so what's going on with the golf course? Well, boy, my ears just perked up right there, that this is a pretty big deal in the city of Moreno Valley. And so that's why I went back to my, my principles of my company, I said, guys, the first project you have is in Ruidosso Downs, okay, in New Mexico. You only play golf there six months a year, because you got the winter in the other years. It's a beautiful country club, but it's built to a country club people, but the people, there's not that much money in New Mexico to go there, so they all come from Texas that were there. And they just lost money like crazy. My guys love to play golf, I think, we have a passion for it. Then we bought another golf course in Phoenix, a down and dirty golf course, with the idea that that was gonna become a senior play. Then that golf course did the same thing that happened to this one here, it went down the tubes, we just never got the revenue there. So that was why a big item that we had to talk to our investment committee, saying, guys, right now it's not a golf course. Right now it's vacant land, it is not a golf course, it's vacant land, it's open space. We have to go in and get the zoning changed from open space to high-density residential to make that work. Yeah, there's a catch, we have to open up the golf course, and that is gonna have to be there, but that's when we got ahold of Mark and Saul and made that all happen. Great question though.
Mr. Sims?
What is a operating expense per year for the golf course if you have the, the two, the two nines back open? I mean, is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars even a reasonable, does that even cover the water bill?
The two hundred and fifty thousand is only, is not for a golf course operation. The two hundred and fifty thousand is just for the maintenance of the grass, and the trimming of the grass, and the watering of the grass. Now, the beauty that, about this golf course that we have, and it's all in the deal as well, with our agreement with the city will be, is that this is on well water. Okay, so basically the water's free. The only thing we're paying for is the power to pump the water out of the wells. Downside is, the, the biggest well that we have is a mile and a half off-site. So it takes, takes a lot of electricity to get it there, but we have, you gotta understand, we bought this property out of bankruptcy, foreclosure, there was no paperwork in it at all. When we walked in the doors of the restaurant, literally, there was a pan of french fries still sitting there. It had been about three or four months that had been, before anybody opened up the door. It's kinda like the old TV show, I don't know if you see those fix-it, fix-it-ups TV shows where they go buy a house in foreclosure, you walk in and, what do we got? Well, that's what happened in this situation. We had no plans for where the irrigation system was, we didn't know where anything was, we've had to do a ton of research to find out where the pumps were and all those kinds of things. So we've finally done that, we've, we've done, we, now we have a pretty good idea what we're doing there. Did that answer your question? I can't.
The two fifty is for maintenance, should the golf course cease to operate?
Well, I, I, it was my understanding that, that the, I, I thought that was a, a recycled water was used on that course.
It was, it was previously used, which is another.
And there's sufficient groundwater, there's a well, and who, who owns the well and who's providing that?
We own the well, we own the water. There's, uh, Hovanian Homes is talking right now that they have a claim to that water, but that's fine, we have first right to that water behind, if Hovanian actually shows us that they have that, that claim, but we have the first rights to the water in those wells. Uh, yeah, we done, we did, well, I'll tell you why they were using recycled water. We spent four hundred thousand dollars to rebuild the pump. The pump was busted, and what they had done in the oil, in the pump, they used regular oil, you could see the regular oil in that pump, a mile and a half off-site. That's why they went to recycled water, and recycled water is extremely expensive, and our golf course cannot operate and be profitable using recycled water.
And, and there's existing conveyance from the well, from the wellhead to the, to the course?
Oh, yes, yes.
Question?
Yes. Um, I was reading in the condition of, uh, conditions of approval, uh, mentioned that there would be an excess of thirty-six hundred cars on a daily use coming in and out of the apartment building, with four hundred and seventeen units being built. My first question was answered, is would there be streetlights going up on Championship and Stevens? Also, I was looking here on page twenty-one, the condition is of approval, item number one thirty-one, it talked a little bit about pavement. With that much traffic being generated coming in and out of the apartment, are there any funds, perhaps, to, to help with the maintenance of the, the street? Maybe fronting Moreno Beach Drive, Championship, and JFK for pavement and improvement to the streets?
Well, to answer your question, I know we're paying five million dollars in street improvements through our fees through this project. I gotta, I can't tell you where those monies go, once it gets into the hands of the street department. I would assume that it goes there, but I can't tell you that. We are, we are, we are installing though on our own nickel, the streetlights.
I see, I understand. I just remember that on Monday night, a gentleman spoke and said that we already have conditions on the streets there that are starting to deteriorate, and we're going to add another thirty-six hundred plus cars going in and out. So I, I'm guessing, is there any thought process or anything to say that we're gonna help with the encumbrance of funds for maintaining the cities instead of it just landing on the city to maintain those streets? Or possibly put new payment in, and maybe just the, the properties that, that front, you know, phase one, phase two? And which would be JFK, Moreno Beach, and possibly Championship?
Maybe staff could give a little detail as to where the funds go that are traffic and street related? Possibly answer that question?
I have my traffic consultant here, I would just, uh, we're, yeah. Is that an accurate number, thirty-six hundred new vehicles? Okay, all right, that's close enough, okay. So all I know is, we're, we're paying some dollars, we're paying our fair share to make that happen because of that, and installation of those traffic signals. Yeah, I gotta tell you, you know, you got deteriorating roads everywhere in the state of California. I mean, it's, it's kinda the way it is, it's like being blamed for the gophers on the golf course. I mean, it's, I'm sorry, the streets deteriorating before we're there right now, and they're gonna receive five million dollars in funding that they don't have right now, that we're gonna provide them.
Any other questions of the applicant?
Yeah, I have a question. I, I don't know if, I'm hesitant to ask it, but you're gonna get that golf course up and running, and everything's gonna, you know, look nice and everything. But if it doesn't pan out, then what happens to that area? Does it, you know, I know you're gonna keep the grass green, but the clubhouse will close, and then what? Are you still owner of that property, or are you?
We will, we will be selling the golf course and the clubhouse to Diamond Golf and CSC.
Okay, so that will be a separate entity then?
Yep.
Okay, then it's up to them, but you will be maintaining it for ten years?
Well, we're putting money, we're not gonna maintain it, we're gonna put two and a half million dollars into an escrow fund operated by the city. The city will have the cash then to maintain it. But we'll be, we won't be maintaining it, we, we will be, probably won't be around in ten years. But the, now, we're talking doomsday scenario.
Yeah.
Okay?
That's why I didn't want to go out.
Let's define doomsday what we're talking about here. Again, there are no banks right now that lend money on a golf course, it just flat-out doesn't happen. Matter of fact, our golf course buyer, we're financing this golf course redevelopment. Bridge is financing that. Another, forgot to mention about putting your money where your mouth is, we're financing more than fifty percent of what their rehab costs are for the golf course. Okay? So that, as I mentioned, that number is three point three million dollars to redo that entire golf course, just the eighteen holes, the outside. On top of that, we, as the seller of the clubhouse building and the restaurant building, we're putting in another, between that and the fencing and all the restrooms around the golf course that are just trashed right now, we're going to repair all those, that's another, about two point one million that we're putting in there. So we're fixing up the property, they'll buy it with all the improvements, the golf course will be open, you have a new restaurant, you have, uh, new restrooms throughout the course. And that's another thing I keep mentioning to the community, guys, you don't need to play golf here, I'm not asking much from the community, other than if you have kids and you wanna go to Boys, have them go to Boys and Girls Club, learn the game of golf, if you wanna come to a Sunday brunch at our restaurant, please do, if you wanna hire the facility, please do, if you wanna play golf, please do. Help us make this work, all right? I gotta tell you, we've received a ton of interest from folks, please bring it back, please bring it back, please bring it back. And I'm sure they're gonna be very happy with where it is. I can't tell you, we, there won't be another major recession, depression that happens in that ten-year period where the golf course doesn't close, but you will have two point five million from us to help keep that in a much better condition than it was the last time it closed.
Okay, but the, is the golf courts contingent upon building the apartments, is that?
No, the other way around.
The other way around?
The apartments are contingent upon the golf course being open for play.
Okay, that's, maybe I worded it wrong, okay.
Other question?
Yes, I have a question, and, and it may be directed more at Diamond Golf. Being that part of the golf course, I believe you said the lake nine, will be set up for, um, exercise field, pay as you play, that sort of thing, and I guess I'm, you know, I've lived on a golf course and currently do. And I guess my question would be, is if people are coming in and out of this, once they pay, what are the provisions of stopping people from letting others in once they get through that gate?
Yeah, you're not, that's, that's social responsibility that, we're not gonna, seriously, we're not gonna go in and manage somebody letting their friends in and trying to get one over on everybody. Now, I would hope, I would hope that the community itself would manage that, that deal and get ahold of us and say, hey, do you realize you got five guys out here that are on the course, or that, that never, didn't pay? At that point, then we'll come out there, but we, seriously, uh, what's gonna end up happening is, you're gonna get a card to access that, the, the, to access it, you have to pay. Oh, yeah, you might buy one card for a family, and, and mom and dad gives it to their kid, and they use it, and that kind of thing, that's fine. We're, again, we're just trying to get enough revenue to kee, keep that in play and keep it green. That's again why Bridge Investment Group is, is paying twenty-five percent of those maintenance costs on that lake nine.
Well, being that this is Moreno Valley, it probably won't be families giving it to families. And it'd just be a concern of mine, because being on the golf course, that butts up right against your backyard, which means people will be trying to access that to come in and have socialization that don't necessarily are supposed to be in there, with no security to say, we're not gonna open this gate up and let our buddies in here and start doing activities that should not go on.
Don't misunderstand me, that, part of the maintenance of that ongoing maintenance charge we're talking, it includes security. There will be security on that site. I mean, it's, it's not just, like, no, I, we will have security running through there, like, just like we have now. Geez, our golf clubhouse has been broken into a bunch here over the past year, and they kept on breaking windows, we ended up stopped just border the windows, I was, instead of paying that cost. Now we have full-time security on our site, uh, which I also mentioned to the community the other night, that if they have any concerns or whatever, because of lack of response or whatever, something's happened by that area, feel free to contact our security guard on there, he'll get ahold of the cops or whatever. Another thing I tried to mention too, as well as the, I mentioned the other night about the gopher control, I know a lot of residents have tons of issues with gophers out there, as we do on the golf course and as we do at our Balago Reserve Apartments right now. We are contracted with a, a gopher company to remove those gophers, and he has agreed to work with the homeowners in the neighborhood, and I can't tell you what his price is, but at least we have a go-to guy that understands what's going on with the two hundred and seventy acres and could help the community as well, if they have individual problems with their homes. I know it's beside the point, but I thought that was just another thing I wanted to throw out there, because we're trying to make it work for the whole community.
Thank you.
I, at this time, I think this is going on for quite some time, I'd like to get to the public comments. Mr. Sanzamar?
Just before you go there, I'd just like to add a couple of things, because there's been a lot of discussion about the, uh, condition of the, of the maintenance, and the word drought was mentioned again. I have had a chance to look through. I have had a chance to look through the draft agreement that ultimately will be going to the city council, and what that does reflect is the same language that we put into our staff report and into the specific plan amendment language, which is in your staff report. It talks about it being maintained in a green park-like condition, and it says that that standard is consistent with community parks. There was no reference in any of the documents I read just now that reference a drought-like condition, so we may need to continue to work with them on that language as we get to the ultimate decision by the city council, but I wanted to make sure that you're aware that I have reviewed that. The other thing is, there's been a lot of discussion with regard to the golf course and the Lake Nine, there has been very little discussion about the apartment complex itself, so if you're expecting for some comments on, from the applicant himself about the apartment community before you open public comments, I just wanted to point that out.
Okay. Based on that, anybody have any questions on the apartment project itself? I have one, but I also had a question since we are on the golf course at the moment, the, the lake portion, was there any discussion of somehow turning that into an amenity for the HOA, since they have the most interest in its value and its, its use?
Very early on, very early on, we talked to different HOAs about just donating the nine holes to the HOA. They didn't want to take on that maintenance charge themselves.
All right, and, and no, no compromise position where they could get some kind of a subsidized benefit that would give them a vested interest in its condition?
Those could happen, but in, in reality, out there on that Lake Nine, there are a number of different HOAs out there. It's not just one HOA that goes all around all nine holes, you have various different sizes.
Okay, all right, that would get complicated. Yeah, all right, one more question?
We are a security camera city, and we have, you're putting in new, two new traffic signals. Would you consider putting traffic cams on those signals?
Sure, I don't have any issue with that. I mean, is that a requirement? Is that, is that on every traffic signal, are you putting those security cams in?
They're, we're, they're scattered all over the city.
I wouldn't mind, I don't think our golf course operators would mind having a traffic signal on that either, just to see if who's maybe coming in after hours, et cetera, whatever, but we have cameras on our clubhouse.
I mean, it actually might be good for the apartment building itself if there's an issue there, to be able to go back to the cameras and see what happened.
I think that's a great call.
Thank you.
All right, I've got one quick question on the apartment project. Thanks very much, I appreciate all the information. Could, could you give me a comparison of the density for the existing Phase One development and the proposed Phase Two? How do they compare?
I'm not too sure what the, well, they're both, as far as density, they're both zoned the same, which is our twenty for the general plan, and it's high-density, specific plan zoning, which is I think a density between seventeen to twenty units per acre, and currently the density being proposed is at nineteen for the four hundred and seventeen apartment units.
Okay. Okay. No other questions? Let's move on to the public hearing so these people can get a chance to speak. So at this time, we'll open the public hearing, and, make it available for speakers. Yeah, could you call the first three so that they can be queued up and ready to go?
The first three are Bill Shepson, Anne McCallish, and Graham Baldwin.
And since we do have many speakers, let's try and adhere to the three minutes and we all get a chance to speak.
I'll try, so many thoughts and so little time. I'm Bill Shepson, I live on Championship Drive, on that ninth hole, so this very much affects me a lot more than a lot of other people. I love golf, I'm a retired educator, and I bought this in ninety-one because it was a view lot, and because I loved to golf, and that's why I wanted to retire. So, I got it when it was new, and so after about six or seven years, I retired like twenty-one years ago, and I've been living there ever since, I have a lot of ties to it. I worked on the course for five years after I retired, I've golfed it hundreds of times, I know every inch of that course, it means a lot to me, and so when I lost that, that meant a lot, and it was a shame to see, to go into such disrepair, because when I worked there, it, it was thriving. You had people come from Los Angeles, from Palm Springs, Big Bear, Hemet, all the way to play this wonderful course, and so to see it deteriorate to the point where it was bad and you had bad management, and you had people just taking from the business, not putting anything back into it, which isn't a good business model, it was a very discouraging thing. Now, I never thought we'd get that golf course back, frankly, because I know a lot about that business and the problems that were involved, and I didn't see anybody anxious to do this, and pretty much given up hope that we'd ever get one back. So along comes Bridge, and I was amazed because what you have is a motivated owner that needs us and we need them to get this thing done, and I don't see any other circumstance where this could have ever been possible. And so that's why, in spite of me being one of the few, because on twenty-five holes of this, you will never look at apartments, but I do, and yet I support this, because it's very important to the community, it's important for me to have a golf course there that I retired to and hope for the best for, and I don't see this opportunity ever coming up again, and I don't think we can pass this up. I also cannot recall, and maybe I'm wrong on this all the time I've lived here, but I can't recall any residential area coming in that is going to do as much for the city as they have promised to do. So the other part that I was worried about was, okay, they come and say they're gonna do this, but is this a bait-and-switch thing? They're business people, they want the apartments, so once they get those, screw the golf course, you know, and that's what we're left with, so, I'm sorry. So anyway, it's, that was a possibility, and that, I was excited but also concerned, but everything that they have promised that I have seen, they've done.
Sir, your time is up.
It's three minutes already?
Yes, yes, actually, actually three and a half, so.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize that's what you're saying.
That's all right.
They want me off, I guess, so, but let's get this diamond back, we need it.
All right, next speaker, Anne McCallish.
Good evening to everybody, my concern is, I didn't see any of the layouts that were presented to us on, I live on Lake Nine, my house will be directly behind where their opposed bunker practice for the Boys and Girls Club, and I speak for me and many of my neighbors that could not be here tonight. Our concern is, you know, I've been there since two thousand and two, when the house was built, and yes, I have had broken windows, that's a price you have to pay living on a golf course, as my neighbors have too, but these are, these are professional golfers, you know, men and women that have golfed, we're talking about kids that are gonna be right there directly behind our houses, you know, playing, and how many broken windows are we gonna have to pay for? That's a big concern, and I didn't notice the layout that was presented to us at both meetings, where the practice bunker is gonna be. So, that was my concern.
Thank you. Graham Baldwin.
Good evening, I'm Graham Baldwin, I've been a resident of Moreno Valley for almost thirty-four years, we've been on the, next to the golf course since two thousand and one, and just like one of the commissioners mentioned earlier about playing the Mountain Nine, I live on the Mountain Nine, but I couldn't play it because it's a peak die course, hopefully that will change. We've seen the deterioration that you've heard tonight over the years to that course, and it's just an incredible shame, because we moved there in the first place, my wife and boys and I, because it was so beautiful. Before I forget, because time does, is at a minimum here, one of the things that struck me as very, very unusual in this case, was that from the beginning, in twenty sixteen to now, the developer has gone out of its way to include everyone in the planning phase of what is going to take place, and I was amazed at that for the simple reason that I'm a retired attorney, practiced for forty years. Over those forty years, I had a lot of contact with a lot of developers, I've never seen anybody with this humanity before seeing Bridge. They actually listened to what we had to say, they incorporated what we mentioned, I was, I was just flabbergasted that a large organization would do that. I would like to also say, from the perspective of safety, if anyone walks along JFK, they think they're at Le Mans. It's like a racing strip. Right across the street from the, from the course, we have a beautiful elementary school, but people fly along there at fifty-five, sixty miles an hour and greater. Traffic lights go in there as promised, I think that's gonna change things. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you call the next three?
Gabrielle Sibley, Donovan Sadique, and Clifford Wilson.
Good evening, commissioners, I'm Gabrielle Sibley, and I do agree with the proposed, proposal to support the golf course and the apartments, because they go hand-in-hand, and before I moved to Moreno Valley, I admired the golf course, my nephew used to play on it a lot, he's a real good golfer, and it was so beautiful, but I moved here less than two years ago, and I was surprised to see the golf course in sad condition, and let's make Moreno Valley beautiful like the other cities, we need a good golf course, and I hope that you will support the proposed plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that's Donovan Sadique with the Q. A lot of you guys know me, Joanne and Robert, I never got a chance to congratulate you guys on your appointment and stuff, we've been in the trenches on opposite sides, but I think this is a project that we could possibly agree on, it's bringing something to Moreno Valley. Now, a lot of people have a misconception that there's only one golf course in Moreno Valley. Now, I happen to live on an original golf course right down the street in Frederick, so if you get a chance, you could go down there and do that, okay? Now, that would be considered the Edgemont area, and those of us that know Edgemont, it's one of the oldest neighborhoods. Now, because I live near a golf course, my property values are a little bit bigger in the Edgemont area, so it's a win-win for those that are on the golf course, and, because what, what it was didn't help your property values at all, so by having something there is gonna increase your property values, and I'm sure they're gonna work out all of the problems. And when this project started, I'm gonna tell you guys, Rick Sansomar and his team did a great job, and I was drawn to it from the very beginning, because I wanted to see what was going on with a developer that was gonna come and do this. Now, my biggest thing is, I've been here since nineteen seventy-seven, this is my nephew here, and when I was his age, living here, there was no Boys and Girls Club, and there was nothing for us. Now, these kids, forty years later, have a chance to have a Boys and Girls Club, and I think that's a win-win for the whole community, because these kids could have someplace to go, something to do, rather than just walking the streets and vandalizing the area. So I've met with Eric, I'm telling you, he's the real deal, I've never seen somebody that would put that kind of effort out ahead of time, not knowing if he's gonna make a return on his investment. So, I would really hope you guys really look at this, at the advantages and the plus that this project will bring, especially in that area. I mean, I'm on this side of the city, it breaks my heart for as long as I've lived here to see what's going on on that side of the city, possibly end up going in the wrong direction. Now, we have a WLC coming in twenty-five years, a lot of great things could be happening, but we've gotta bring something here to bring other people here, the base is gone, so we don't have that anymore, but let's bring something in that we could work with, and I think this is a great project, and Joanne and Robert, you know, if I don't think it's a good project, I would be out here telling you that it's not a good project, okay? So to take that into consideration, I want to thank you guys again and again, let's think about what's, for the future for our kids and having them learn some, some good stuff. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Clifford Wilson, and then Patricia Roy after that.
Good evening. I'm a little bit more hopeful now than when I previously arrived here. The harsh reality is that this is a sanctuary state, and having said that, you're building four hundred and seventeen units, I think he said approximately thirty-six hundred more vehicles on Championship, I'm a little concerned with that. So, we also have a middle school, we also have an elementary school, and I think we have an assistant area facility for seniors, so I'm really concerned about safety, and with regard to Latskey kits and safety for all kits, I think we should really take a look at that before we just say yes. Obviously, we all need money, but how we make money is also important, and if we do not consider the safety of the community and simply let this project go through, we might have big challenges later on. So I would appreciate if everyone just take a deep breath, it's a nice thing to talk about, but before we step forward, let's take second thoughts, maybe even third thoughts. Four hundred and seventeen units, that's gonna be a lot of people saturated in one area. I also live on Championship. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Patricia Roy, Don Barbham follows.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Patricia Roy, I live on JFK and Moreno Beach of the Valley Course. The comment that someone made just a moment ago about the speeding down JFK is horrible. Just go out there any morning and watch what happens with the traffic. Stoplights there would be fantastic to help control that. How somebody's not gotten killed out there, especially a child, I don't understand. I've played this course probably since it opened in nineteen eighty-eight or nineteen eighty-nine, I used to travel from Cerritos almost every weekend to play this course. When I retired, we bought our home out here specifically on this golf course, because it was gorgeous. It's hard to play, it's very difficult to play, I'm about a twenty-two handicap, and I can't shoot less than a hundred and five on this course. The Valley is a tough course, but I will tell you, they have done an absolutely beautiful job restoring the greens, I've walked that, because there's all kinds of ways to get in, I've walked it and looked at them, the greens are beautiful, they've made them simpler for us to play on, which is great for me, and, and I think that this is a win-win, because they need us, we need them. Let me just say one thing about the golf course as it is, it's horrific, it has been, it's like it tears your heart out, if you've moved here because you knew your property values would stay good, you could play on it, and you'd have a beautiful view, that doesn't exist anymore. Understand, I think it was part of the economy, but it also has to do with a very, very, very bad management at the end of that course. You can't have a successful course if you don't put anything into it and you take everything out of it. All of your clubs left, the men's club, the women's club, they left, the high schools, the college kids used to come and play, they played by my house every- kids used to come and play. They played by my house every single week. That course was successful. Maybe not greatly so, but it was successful up until the point that Jeff left. When Jeff left and Charlie came in, it went down like a rocket because Charlie did not know what he was doing. I think if you put a good management team back in with this, this golf course, it will be a success. And I implore you, please, think about this because I think it's a great thing to bring this Pete Dye jewel back to Moreno Valley. Thank you.
Very much. Don Barbham, P.T. McEwen follows. Moving on, P.T. McEwen, followed by Cana Iglesias.
Oops, sorry. Uh, good evening, Commissioners, staff. Um, I'm, my name's P.T. McEwen. I'm the CEO for the Boys and Girls Clubs. Um, we're the one that's coming in to do the after-school program. Um, Eric mentioned, um, PGA is one of our partners that's been with our, we have a junior golf program that we work with kids. And, um, when this opportunity came along, PGA got very excited of Southern California and, and, uh, Boys and Girls Clubs. And we got together, went in, and fortunately, we were the ones that were awarded, um, the contract to do the youth golf program. And as Eric alluded, you know, golf kinda died with youth when Tiger Woods started failing, I guess, if you will. Um, and so what it is, is the idea is to bring back, uh, bring back the sports with the kids. Um, we are looking at, um, having access to the course. Uh, to, to answer the lady who was talking about the little practice on this back, on this one side where we're planning to put the Boys and Girls Club, it's actually a little pit, uh, pitch and putt, uh, chip and a, um, a putting, putting green. So we're not, there's no tee box to whack in. So hopefully, if we do our job right teaching the kids, we won't have any broken windows. Um, but I can't guarantee that. Um, but then we can also take those kids out on the course. Uh, and so besides golf, we actually focus on the whole child. So we actually do academic success programs. We want every kid to achieve academic success, graduate high school on time. We want them to have a plan for the future. Um, the other thing we look at is also healthy lifestyles, which our golf program follows right into. We want everyone to fall, fall in love with some kind of leisure, uh, leisure activity that they can carry on through their life to lead a healthy lifestyle, along with nutrition and some other things. And then lastly, we like to build good character and leadership, um, in those kids and teach them, you know, uh, right from wrong and how to become good citizens and be engaged. And someday, those kids will actually sit up, sit up here where you're sitting now and be the next planning commission and ta, taking care of their city. So that's, that's what we bring to the project. Um, we're very excited. Um, I happened to be at that meeting in August where Eric barely made it out alive. It was, uh, it was interesting, but what I've been impressed with is that Bridge has been very responsive to everything. Um, they've been responsive to the community's needs. They've been responsive to Boys and Girls Club needs, um, trying to make this a win-win for everybody. So, uh, we're very supportive of the project, and we hope that the commission, um, approves it to go forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Iglesias, followed by Raphael Burgers.
Good evening, Chair. Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, staff, and good evening, residents. If in January, I actually asked the City Council, how much does it cost to build a traffic signal or a traffic intersection? And they told me it could cost anywhere from a quarter to half a million dollars. So I understand, I feel like how it's very nice and important that the developer is putting the traffic signal on it. And talking about the traffic signal, like, oh, you know how there's like a crosswalk in there? Can there please be like two crosswalks in there? Championship and, the Championship and Mono Beach? And could those signals, like the crossing walk signals, last at least like, at maximum forty-five seconds? Like fifteen seconds to start the walk and thirty seconds to finish the walk? Secondly, can the, can, can the bus stop passing Championship going not be like fixed or changed or made exactly how it looks like a cross championship from Mono Beach? And lastly, I will ask, if, I will ask that the staff recommend to a developer to put fiber optic internet cable. Even though if we, and we might not have that fiber optic internet in that area, just have it ready so it will, when there's actually a really fiber optic ca, cable, when it comes, it will be ready to be just connected to an entire apartment unit. And as a digital native, someone who was actually born after the millennial generation, understand how important the internet is and how fast the internet is willing needs to be, so that all of the staff that can, connect to the internet could be running smoothly and without any delay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Burgers, followed by Corey Joseph.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, staff, residents, and our guests. Many, many years ago, I used to be a caddy. I learned how to play golf because the Boys Club in New York City used to take a bunch of us to Connecticut for the summer to get out of the city. I know how to hold the club. I learned how to play golf. And I used to be good looking for the ball, for the player. So I'm good at what I, I like golf course. The tranquility in areas of it. I consider this case that we're in right now a compromise case. They want something, and we want something. They want the apartments, we want the golf course. If we do nothing, we can look at the pages four, four, fourteen seventy through fourteen eighty, and we can see the horror of what it looks like in color. It looks terrible. In person, I can imagine if my backyard was that. Okay? Cause they, they all got beautiful front yards, but it's the backyard they're complaining about. Okay? And, and that's what they want fixed, cause that's what they pay for. Okay? We heard a lot of dreams here tonight, why they moved here and why they retired in the city of Moreno Valley. And I would like to see that be honored. They should have respect. They work hard for it. And if we do something, we just saw the clip that Mr. Diaz gave us of the improvements. I love it. On page eleven seventy-eight, you can see the work, the building, the bricks, everything, how it's gonna look. And if you look at the four-story building, there's no garages. But if you look at the two stories and one stories, you see a lot of little garages doors. So you're gonna see a lot of cars parked indoors, not on the lot itself. One thing I do not believe that there's gonna be thirty-six hundred cars up there. Please, there's only four hundred and seventeen apartments. If anybody had three cars, times that, you'll be around maybe fifteen hundred cars. Maybe. Okay, maybe. I know there'd be a lot of cars up there. Okay? We gotta be honest with ourselves. We're never gonna get another chance to take their money to be used in our city. They're putting up the money in return for a compromise, twenty, their apartments for our golf course. Okay? That's the bottom line. So let's make sure, one thing, one thing, cause I only got seven seconds. Make sure that they keep their promise on paper. Okay? They have to keep their promise on paper like we did with Hana Fairview. Make sure everything's on paper.
Thank you. Corey Joseph, followed by Raymond Talbot.
Good evening, everyone. Me and my husband, we were new to the city, and it was, um, the golf course that drove us here to purchase our home as well, not knowing that it was already closed. So, um, hearing his proposal, I, I, I changed my mind, um, cause I was not a, I was not for it at first, but, um, looking at the development of the golf course, I love. However, I do have concerns about the apartment building, um, with so much traffic, so many people. That was another reason why we moved here, because it was peaceful and it was, you know, not a lot of traffic and not a lot of apartment buildings. With apartment buildings come, people coming and going. And I've had my mailbox is broken into and the lack of jobs that's already here. Um, he did touch on the fact that he would be bringing, um, a bit of jobs here, which is a plus. Um, so my main concern is just the riffraff, the coming and goings of different tenants, um, the speed on, along that street that they're talking about. I, I travel that street daily, and, um, it, they, they're speeding up and down the street like crazy. So those are my concerns, and that's all I wanted to say today. Thank you for taking my statement.
Thank you very much. Raymond Talbot, followed by Jean Calloway.
I don't think I can improve upon what Raphael stated. He was very emphatic about several issues, and I second all of his comments. Um, just a brief story about why we live here in Moreno Valley. When I retired from a job in El Segundo, and my wife is a professor at UCR, we had our choice. We would either live in Back Bay or we'd live in Riverside. We didn't even know about Moreno Valley, frankly. And, uh, but we play golf. And so when we were out here, I looked and found, wow, there's a fabulous golf course. Let's go play it. We played it, and immediately, we started looking for a house on the golf course, which we found. We live on Lake One. We played golf for many years. We enjoyed it. We were disappointed as the management degraded and degraded and degraded and were devastated when it closed, but we understood the economic issues. And we were elated when we discovered that Bridge had this imaginative solution. They get something, we get something. We get something we want, they get something they want. Their plans, I think, look quite nice. Um, the traffic issue, I do think is a significant issue. The traffic lights will improve things. Um, but quite frankly, I don't think an additional four hundred homes, so to speak, the apartments, in that location in Moreno Valley, in the long run, is gonna make a tremendous amount of difference with respect to the traffic. And I know that there's plans to develop east, eastwards of Moreno Beach Drive, and there's gonna be a lot more traffic generated from that. But that's just the way progress goes. Uh, but to summarize it, I support the project. And I support it in part for the selfish reason, selfish reason that I want the golf course back. It's just the way it works. Uh, in my remaining minute, I would just, I'd just like to say thank you, folks, for being on a commission. Governmental jobs, semi-governmental jobs, however you characterize a commission, are a lot of work. Oftentimes, no thanks. A lot of times, it's angst. And I just thank you for doing the job and appreciate your effort. And I hope that you will approve this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Jean Calloway, followed by Gary Elrou. Iru, apologies.
Good evening. Um, I live on Championship, and the only thing, my dispute, the only thing I have is, I don't think you get anything for free. And he was up here talking, and it sounds wonderful, uh, to have the golf course again. I mean, it has just, I mean, it has. Uh, you look outside, we, forty percent of the reason we bought that house is for the view, I think. And you look outside now, and it's, um, nothing but brown, uh, chrome weeds. Somebody, I don't know who, finally just start, decided to, uh, when the fire season came, I think it was about two years ago, decided to, uh, come through and chop down the weeds. But before that, my husband was jumping the fence and going over so he could, uh, get rid of all the weeds and stuff because they were growing up on our fence. And, um, you know, there was fires everywhere. And, uh, you, I mean, all you had to do was turn on the TV. And that's why, um, I mean, it sounds wonderful, but I still don't think you get anything for free. And, um, I mean, I'd love to have the golf course back in shape, but I just don't think that they're gonna do everything they say. I mean, what are the, one point two million dollars, why are they gonna give that to us? I mean, they're in a, you guys gotta admit, they're in it for the money. Uh, we all know that. And so I just wanted to let you know that there are a lot of people in Moreno Valley that live over here by us that do not want more apartments. Uh, the traffic on Moreno Beach Drive and on JFK is getting terrible. And now we read in the paper where, um, they wanna build that giant warehouse, and they're adding sixteen thousand more trucks per day down the six, I mean, you can't even get to work on the sixty anymore. I've worked hard my whole life, and so has my husband. And, uh, I still work. Uh, I love my house. I don't wanna move, but we will consider moving if, uh, they pass, we get more apartments. I mean, we've dealt with the apartments there now, and they aren't such a bother, but four stories is ridiculous. Thank you.
Mr. Iru, followed by John Calloway.
Hi, my name's Gary Iru. I'm a pharmacist. My wife is a retired school teacher. We've lived on Championship Drive since nineteen ninety-three. Um, I too moved there because there was a nice Pete Dye course. I'm a golfer. I played golf there, thousands of rounds. Thing is that we also moved there for our view. And they're gonna put in four-story buildings right across the fairway from us that's gonna totally obstruct our view. This project's too dense, and if it's viable for a golf course, I don't see why the golf course operator doesn't just buy it and run it as a golf course, and why they need high-density apartment buildings to make the excuse that they're gonna be profitable. Now, he said that they run, Bridge runs two golf courses that aren't profitable, and that golf is not a profitable industry. And if it's not profitable, then I'm afraid they're just dangling shiny objects in front of all of us because we want the golf course back. And I too want the golf course back. I'd love to see that be a successful golf course again, but at what cost? And the other thing is, um, I think people went there because it was a Pete Dye course. And at what point do you flatten it out and flatten the greens and flatten the fairways? And at what point can you not call it a Pete Dye course anymore? I mean, I'm not sure the way the current plan is that they won't get a lawsuit if they use Pete Dye's name in the, in the advertising. And that the hole outside my house, they're gonna change from a par three hole to, I mean, a par four hole to a par three. They're gonna take out the bunker that protected us because people would, people would, uh, you know, they would hit their tee shot to the right and make it a hundred and ninety-yard par three, you know, straight into the houses. So I'm worried about the layout also, the changes. So I, I, I'm just afraid these are all shiny objects to, to let us authorize building of these towering apartment buildings impairing our view. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. John Calloway, followed by Angelica Franco, and Fernando Franco.
Good evening. My understanding from reviewing some of the documentation I've seen regarding this, uh, proposed project would have an increase in the, uh, density of the population of about thirty-five percent. I believe in the existing units, it's about seventeen units per acre. And what they're talking about now is about twenty-three units per acre. The, another, which, uh, necessitates them having to build three, four-story apartment building, which is non-conforming with the community. This was originally, the Moreno Valley Ranch area was originally conceived as being a R-one residential neighborhood with a golf course, schools, parks, and then commercial areas laid out as part of the design for the community. And throughout the three decades, approximately it's been since then, the skyline has been maintained by structures of one or two stories high. This allows people's views to be maintained so that they can see This allows people's views to be maintained so that they can see the valley, the bad lands and the mountains around us. By putting those units where they are at that population density, it requires them to build at heights which severely impede upon the views that many people moved to this area and paid money to have those views. With the way that they're doing it now, um, from what I've seen, those heights virtually eliminates the view from the house that I have on Championship Drive. Right now, I can see the valley. I can see the bad lands. I can see the mountains. With what they're proposing, I'll be lucky if I could see the mountains anymore, let alone the valley and the and the bad lands. But they did say one thing that if they actually did it, could be helpful. They said they wanted to take some of the land, or the soil rather, from the driving range and spread it out over, I believe is the uh one, nine and three hole of the mountain course uh to fill in those, make the course easier. Uh, perhaps if they were to lower the level of the grounds where the driving range is, they would be able to keep from impending upon the uh.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Angelica Franco followed by Fernando Franco.
Hi there. I don't know how you guys do this. I'm nervous. Um, I live on Championship Drive. I live live up at the top of the viewpoint. So these proposed apartments are literally going to be in my backyard. Um, like everyone here, we were drawn to this beautiful quiet neighborhood, these beautiful homes, on a golf course. It was the dream. It was the house we were going to retire in. And then imagine our surprise, the golf course tanked. Um, so like everyone else here, we want the golf course back too. And you know, essentially, we support the golf course coming back. But what I'm asking you is to please um look at everything. I know a question was asked about sightlines. And I went to the planning uh planning office today and looked at all the plans. There aren't any sightlines. There is a cross-section of a of a sightline, but you do not see like from my property what the apartments are actually going to look like. What I was told is that the tallest unit is just under fifty feet, I believe forty-seven or forty-eight feet tall. It would be two hundred feet from the back of my property line. And I was told to look at it like, you know, you put your hand in your face and it blocks everything. And you pull it away and it doesn't block so much. But an apartment building is this big and you pull it away and it still blocks your view. There is a tree in my backyard that is approximately two hundred feet from my back fence. My husband went out there with the measuring tape and we guesstimated it's about thirty feet tall. From my yard now, that tree extends way over twenty feet above the top of my fence. So what I'm asking you is to please look and ask that um that Bridge consider our views and maybe not build four-story units behind us. They can still have their apartments, but do they need four hundred and seventeen? Can we give them fewer and bring them down so that it's a compromise? We get the golf course, they get their apartments, but we don't all have to just take it in the end. I mean, we there has to be something here for all of us. So I'm asking you to please um, don't allow them to rob our views. Uh, let's let's maintain the beautiful atmosphere we had. Let's not have these super tall apartments. Let's just keep it the quaint neighborhood it was and just don't let it overtake. We don't have to give them everything because they're giving us a golf course. We we can also say, hey, thank you, but let's just bring it down a little bit. That's it. Thank you guys for listening.
Thank you very much. Fernando Franco followed by Elsie LaSalle.
Evening. Uh, I've been a resident of Moreno Valley for over thirty years. I've lived in on Championship Drive since oh eight. And I'm the one that was measuring the tree. Um, uh, I want the course. I think it's great for the community. I think it's great for essentially everybody. I think it's a it's a win-win for everybody. But I'm going to reiterate what my wife said. Uh, they don't have to have everything. And I don't want to be uh looking, I went I went upstairs to see more or less where the apartment buildings would be height-wise. And uh, you know, we've never had anybody back there. So as I get dressed, I'm in my underwear, whatever doing but getting dressed, I don't want to look across the apartment buildings and look at somebody else with in their underwear. Not a good sight on this side, possibly not on the other side. So that concerns me. You know, it's something that we've always had. Uh, and and that the 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 height of having four stories, that really concerns me. I do want, I do want the golf course. I want them to be successful. But I think that maybe if they can maybe alter that a little bit, I know they've done a lot. But at the same time too, underwear, underwear, not so good. Thank you.
Thank you. Elsie LaSalle followed by Bob Vander Walker.
Good evening, everyone. I live on Championship Drive and the reason is the same as everyone else had said. And I have here a picture that I took in two thousand and six uh right here. Uh, it shows you the view that I am enjoying and the reason why I moved. And I am retiring in a year and I am now no spring chicken, as you can see. So uh, everything that I have, I invested in this property. I am now being offered five million dollars for the two two traffic lights, which I believe is not even enough to cover the cost of many of us who have viewed our, given our views tonight. Um, on top of that, and every other topic that has been discussed here, there will be an impact also. I'm a public school, high school teacher. There will be an impact of students because of the density of the population in that one particular area where we live. Um, I'm going to move over those buildings that will be removing my views here. I I took post-it notes. I use it a lot in my classroom, by the way, this post-it note. So I hope with this you can see what everyone else has been talking about on the impact of the apartment buildings uh losing our views. So with that many students, that means we would have a need for probably probably building, school buildings. And who's going to shoulder the building of that? The homeowners or would it be the renters of a high-dense four hundred seventeen-unit apartment building? So not only am I planning to live in this property for the next ten years, uh which is the promise that I'm hearing is for the next ten years, there will be a very nice and green golf course. But I think um I I tried, I'm I've been working hard on living a healthy life. I can live longer than that. Also, um, I I I now understood that the Boys and Club will be there, uh the after-school. That is a good thing. I'd like to thank Bridge for that. Um, so I'm asking and I'm opposed to the density of this four hundred seventeen-unit um apartment structure right behind this backyard that I have worked so hard for. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Vander Walker. Followed by Don Meinberg.
Good evening. Uh, I know you can have some hard decisions to make. Uh, oh, by the way, my name's Bob Vander Walker. I live on Pete Dye. Uh, I'm right on the the ninth hole of the valley. Uh, very disturbed when uh when it closed because it just turned into a desert. Bought the house brand new in two thousand and two. Come here to play golf. Love the community. Uh, found a really nice church down the street, Calvary Chapel, moved my family in. And I said, man, one thing, that golf course ever closes, I'm going to be in trouble. It closed. I'm retired. I play golf. Um, I like the community. I like the golf course. I like the green, green belts. The green belts are going away, by the way, too, because we're not taking care of those. That's another story. But uh, I had to get that in. Because I tried to get some people to look at the changing the uh for the green belts, pay for the money so we can maintain that. We're losing that also. But I'm here for um the golf course, the apartments. I think the apartments are necessary for the golf course. Without the apartments, we can get no golf course. I like the mutual exchange. So um, I want to thank Bridge and all that they've done. These uh, there's twenty people there. I've met each one of them several times over the last couple of years. They seem to be very earnest about what they're saying they're doing. I'm watching what they're doing. This morning with coffee at nine o'clock this morning, I'm watching six, eight guys out there on the green, working very, very hard for the last several weeks. So what they said that they're going to do before you all said okay, that they would go by faith and start working on the golf course. The golf course is looking really nice right now, considering what it was six months ago. It was dead. So I think in good faith, I think the company is coming forward and asking you and and showing you in good faith that you're going to come with them and work with them so our community can move on. We need growth. Uh, you all know that we need homes. We need apartments. We need streets. We need everything. But without investment, we don't get that. I'm a homeowner. You can only get a little bit from me. But you get a lot more from the commercial that comes in. So we need more. You all know that. You're just looking for a reason to say yes. And I think it'd be good that you know that the community wants you to say yes, to go forward. Understand the concerns that some will have here about height and stuff. You got to work that out. I think they're willing to work things out. I've been to each one of their meetings. People have a complaint and in the next meeting, it's been fixed. So they're working with them. So I got twenty-nine seconds to say, thank you for what you do. Thank you all for being here. Thank you for those guys right there for changing our community for the better with the opportunity with you all saying so. And thank you as my community for coming. And we need our green belts to be changed. We really, really do. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Meinberg. Followed by Scott Woods.
Good evening. I'm not sure what to say anymore because I think Bob just took all my notes. Because I was going to say the same thing. It was funny, you was talking about having a big, you know, netting. I had to leave the community because I couldn't golf on that Pete Dye golf course. So having a simpler golf course is actually something that I would be more attracted to. But I want to talk a little bit uh about just the idea of working with Bridge Investments. Um, one of my, I I had my own business. I've had my own business for almost fifteen years. And I I'm a I'm a development consultant. I look, I I I work with developers. I work with um owners. I've worked with um builders and all that. And in fifteen years, I don't think I have ever experienced a developer quite like Bridge Development. I've never dealt with anybody who truly cares about the community even before profits. Now, I I'm not, I know everything's about money. I mean, we all know that. I've never seen a a a builder who cares so much about making sure that the people's needs are heard. And then, like he mentioned, they've had eleven iterations on the plans because of many of the homeowners that had some concerns. And they're and they're very good concerns. I'm not disagreeing with it. But it's not like they hadn't listened and not only listened, they've reacted. They've could have had this thing up over a year ago. And I'm very interested in in having that done about a year ago and um it wasn't because they were listening to the people. They've made so many changes based on the um information that they learned from these community meetings. I've been to every one of those community meetings. I went to the first one that I'm surprised Eric got out there with his with his head on. And then I've seen it how it's changed to when we just had one last Monday and it was very, very supportive. So I I just want to, I just want to first of all say I I applaud this developer in the way that he does his business. And then the second thing, um, I'm currently a pastor and I do a lot of work with kids, a lot of work with kids. Matter of fact, I've written books for middle school and high school kids. And the one thing that I've talked about with um Dr. Judy White, who's the superintendent of all schools in Riverside County, is you know, we have all these school shootings and all that. And a lot of the reasons for that is because kids have nowhere to go. And the I'm so excited that Moreno Valley is going to have a real, strong, vibrant Boys and Girls Club with the PGA. It's going to give kids an opportunity to be able to grow. They will not be on the streets and they will be able to, I PGA will have an amazing plan with these kids. And it's just, it's just such a win-win for everybody. So I applaud Bridge. I'm excited about the Boys and Girls Club and I am definitely for this project. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Scott Woods followed by Kevin Osmann. Osmann, pardon me.
Good evening. My name is Scott Woods. Um, pleasure to to meet all of the commissioners, the the city staffers. Um, I I want to say one thing right off the top. With regards to the apartments, I support the luxury apartments, Phase Two, Rancho Balago coming over um to our community. I live on Championship Drive on T to the Mountain Fifth, beautiful location. I'm not going to spend time repeating what a lot of my neighbors and community members have stated. They've they've stated a lot of good points, a lot of concerns. But I would be in support of the apartments there at Rancho Balago Phase Two if the golf course was not part of the deal. I'm glad it is, absolutely glad that it is. But I've been on Championship for about eighteen years. And we've seen the decay, the demise, the crime come in. I myself and my family have fallen victim to theft, grand theft auto trailers. I'm a contractor, loaded with tools, mail theft, a lot of organized crime. City officials coming up to the top of the hill outraged by my neighbors and myself with, why are we coming out here in the evenings with guns? Because there's people up and down the street looking at the beautiful view over, you know, the apartments there. They've all responded. They've all done well. The system has worked. I'm pleased to say that the city staffers, they do their job. They do their job. Well, I've learned a lot through the last two years because I've watched and I've sat like, you know, a number of my neighbors and have met, you know, Eric's team and and all of the people on his team and thrilled pieces with the future. But if the golf course was not a part of it and that acreage that is in front of us was not touched, not done anything with, we would have continued more crime. We continued more decay. So just for that, the apartments I'm in full support of, but the golf course coming in, the community coming back. We've been here for thirty-four years. My wife and myself married thirty-four years. That's a hub of the community. Rancho Balago there, the golf course, the restaurant, all of the community efforts that have gone on there in the past, they're coming back. I see what Bridge Investment Group has done. I see the work that Saul is doing. I see the work that Mark Stevens is doing. I'm thrilled to pieces. I walk like some of my neighbors and looked exactly at the greens and looked at things to see what was happening. And I'm thrilled for the future of our community and of our city, especially anyone out around the Rancho Balago area. Full support of the property.
Thank you.
Project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kevin Osmann? No one? Roy Blackert? No Mr. Blackert? There he is.
Much to your sugar in, I bet.
Not at all.
Yeah. Uh, just gives me positive to concern. I've been in this community for six decades. And I understand change. I think everybody here does. But we've seen this community and it and it really pains me to hear somebody come up here and say, well, we never had a Boys and Girls Club because I was a kid in nineteen seventy-seven. And this was fifty-six acre or fifty-six square miles of Boys and Girls Club. I could, I could stand here till three o'clock in the morning till I put you all to sleep of all the activities and things we had to do. of all the activities and things we had to do back then. And what breaks my heart is the kids today do not have that opportunity. Do not have that opportunity I had in this area. We can go through all the economics, I think many of you understand them. And when you hear promises and maybe and kind of, and it can't work, there's something wrong. That property could be made to work. It could be made to work for the better, I believe. I believe Moreno Valley is in some of the conditions and the economic problems because we have compromised, we have accepted, and we did, and we bought those promises. And those promises ninety-eight point seven percent of the time were broken. If Bridge was really for this community and wanted to make this community the best and the brightest, they would work with the community to make that development consistent with the natural beauty and the natural views of that area. Some of the people that live in that area have come up there and articulated that much better than I. I don't know. It's very concerning. I've seen this play out time and time again. And I've seen the results, and I'm not happy about it a lot of times in my hometown. Not many of you can say that. Doesn't make me better than anybody, but it gives me a unique perspective most of you don't have. Heard me a lot, most of you have, and I'm gonna leave it in your hands, hopefully to make the right decision.
Thank you. All right. That is the final speaker on the list, so at this time I'll close the public hearing. Oh, yeah, the applicant. Sorry. Would the applicant like, like to respond to anything he's heard, uh, from the public?
And as he comes up...
You can just call him up again.
Yeah, yeah, come forward, the public hearing's still open, so.
Good evening, planning.
Hi.
It's America. Barbara, Mike. Good evening, planning commissioners and city staff. I'm Ron, this is Barbara, the better half. We're the Dudeks, and we live on Oliver, which is on the, uh, hole three, hole two of Lake Nine. And we're here tonight to be in total support for the apartments being built, and for the added benefits to the city that come from that acceptance of the proposals before you tonight. We've been in Moreno Valley since nineteen ninety-five, and we lived on that course since nineteen ninety-five. And we bought that home for the main reason that everybody over here bought it, and that is for the view. Ours just happens to be the T in the hole, it isn't the mountains, and if you look real good, you'll see the entrance to Lake Paris. And that's our view. Uh, we don't have the mountains and the Badlands, but we did have a beautiful golf course at one time. And we did indeed buy here for that reason, and we retired here for that reason. One added note, and I'll let, uh, my wife add, I want to congratulate the city staff. I did read the staff report, and I haven't read such a clear and concise report stating exactly what the city wants and what the developer is off, a developer is offering. Very lengthy report, but you did good, guys. Besides that, I retired from the postal service after forty-three years, and I always wanted to say, "I got my money's worth." You do work for me.
I see, I need to make a correction, it's not Don Dudek, it's Ron Dudek. My name's Barbara, and I'm here purely for selfish reasons, and I want everybody to know that. I'm a retired teacher, I love my backyard, and when I moved into my backyard, it was beautiful, past my fence. Now it's not so pretty anymore, it's dirty and grassy and weedsy, and it's ugly to look at. Um, I don't look past my fence anymore. I just want this to be green again so I can look out past my fence and see something but dirt, and, um, and I just let everybody know that I'm a very selfish person right now. I want these people to be the kind people they are and the hard-working people they are, and give me some green in my backyard along with all my other neighbors up and down the golf course. We are going to have a walking trail, which I am gonna go on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, last, last one.
Hi, my name is Rose Baldwin, and I have known Bridge now for two years. I live on Championship Drive, I'm a resident of Moreno Valley for twenty-five years, Championship Drive for seventeen. And I wasn't gonna speak tonight, 'cause I unfortunately injured my back, so I wasn't sure I could stand, but I feel that this is pressing. I have worked in many types of business, and I've dealt with developers before. Bridge is one of the most conscientious and sympathetic developers that I have ever met. I've been to every single meeting, I've been to meetings with Bridge privately as well because of my own concerns. I feel for my neighbors that are losing part of their view, but I will say that the golf course is in dire need of rehabilitation. And I do believe that you have found the prospective developer and owner with Diamond to redevelop this golf course and make it the gem of Moreno Valley that it has been for years. I knew Jeff, the former manager of the golf course, and I too, as it's been stated tonight, had known Charlie, who had taken over management after Jeff had left. When Charlie took over management is when the golf course went to seed. We had crime, we've had people come onto the golf course, remove PVC pipes, sprinklers, damage tee boxes, wells, there's been numerous problems. When Bridge came and they took over this project, and they bought this lay on sight unseen, basically, they had no idea that there were three artesian wells that needed to be redug, that there was plumbing that needed to be taken care of. The amount of PVC pipe and sprinklers alone, I can't even imagine the cost that it's gonna cost Diamond and them to get things back up and running just to have greenery. They are serious in their intent about their heartfelt commitment to this community. I have seen them talk to many numerous people about the Boys and Girls Club. The Boys and Girl, Girls Club is essential for this community. He did not touch upon the fact that Bridge also donated two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to this Boys and Girls Club to make sure that it got off the ground, or the fact that there are numerous high schools and junior highs that are interested in getting their golf program back up and running and participating on this golf course. The community needs someone to care about us. Moreno Valley is a great place to live, but it has fallen short on several things, and our students and children are one of them. With Bridge coming in here is going to make a very large impact on that. I have seen the apartments go in that were from Phase One, it's been rather quiet, actually, and I was opposed to those Phase One apartments. So for me to say that I'm supporting Phase Two is a big deal, because I was one of the human outcries against Phase One. I want to thank you for listening to all of us, I want to thank the residents for being here, your staff, and most of all, I want to thank Mr. Eric Hefner and Bridge and Saul and Mark. I want to thank you all for all of your time and effort and your generosity towards this community, and I really hope that you push this through. Thank you very much.
Thank you. No, I'm sorry, she's the last speaker.
Thank you, I've lost my voice here. My name's Brian Stidham, I'm one of the very few that I've heard so far that represents the people that live over off of the cactus on the valley course. We don't have the view problem that some of these people have been talking about, but we are part of the situation, and we are part of the majority of the owners. I don't, I look at this as a second chance for our community to have the golf course be brought back by Eric and Diamond. And now I heard another gentleman earlier say that, you know, they don't understand why Diamond just doesn't take over the golf course and does their own thing with all that. I think people miss the point, Eric's group is planning to finance that, or no other bank will be financing it. So these guys have come in and done something that no one else will ever do for this community, I feel. And, yeah, I look at my home as being an investment and part of my retirement plan. And without having the golf course there, and seeing the way it is right now, well, you know, our area's completely lost its value. And I hope that everybody understands that this is a chance for everybody to benefit, and that you guys take a good look at this and approve this, 'cause I, I support it one hundred percent.
Thank you. Now, would the applicant like to come forward?
Thank you, uh, thank you, and, and a sincere thank you to the staff that's helped us through this process. It hasn't been easy, um, but a, a really sincere thank you to all the residents that showed up here tonight, taking time out of your busy lives and schedules, and, and for the tremendous support we've received tonight. And, um, I tell you, you can never satisfy everybody in the world, all right, but I'm, we're really gonna try to, I try to work with that. I, I'd like to have, uh, Mr. Dan Gaiman, who is our architect with Humphries and Partners Architects, to explain if he could, some of the concerns that the residents mentioned about the view corridors, the heights of the buildings, et cetera, in, in, in one second. The other concern I heard, uh, other than that was a lack of trust, that we're just full of, full of it, that, uh, money talks and BS walks. But we are putting the money up, we put the money up front already, we made that commitment, we're being held to it. And, um, you, you know, uh, it's been a pretty successful business that we've had because we've done what we said. So if you don't trust us, watch us, and then if we do what we say we do, and we've already done that, please let me, please at least come back and say, "Yeah, you did what you said you did." So Dan, can you come up and answer those questions about the three and four stories and the view corridors? Thank you.
Sure. Hi, good evening, my name is Daniel Gaiman, I am studio director with Humphries and Partners in Newport Beach. Um, and just a few things about the site, I, it's been a long evening, but, um, if you've ever sort of looked at the driving range, from the golf club to Championship Drive is seventy feet of vertical fall. Uh, that's a lot of grade to work with. Um, and so part of the reason for the eleven, the iterations of the eleven site plans is to continue to get the houses settled into that bowl, it's like an amphitheater, um, as successfully as possible to keep them low for the folks who are up on the sort of eastern, uh, part of Championship Drive, and as low as possible for the folks who are across from the golf holes toward the west, toward the southwest. Part of the strategy to do that is we have a building that is three stories on the uphill side and four stories on the downhill side, which means it doesn't make the roof any higher. And the reason that is there is to take up grade in the site. So the retaining walls, instead of having miles of retaining walls exposed on the site, we've actually buried them in the houses themselves and allowed them to step down the hill like an Italian hill town in order to smooth the transition of everything down. It's true that, that for some of the houses up on, um, I, I keep, my directions are slightly off, but it's the eastern side of the property where Championship, there's about four or five houses that abut the property. The, the eve line, the upside of those buildings that we have are three stories. Their ground level of those three stories are between twenty-five and twenty-eight feet, almost three stories below the living rooms of the houses on Championship. Our eve is at about the railing of their ground floor patio, um, and then the ridge line, which is over a hundred and sixty feet away, almost a hundred and eighty feet away, is roughly the, the height of their second floor. So the distant views, the mountains, the fireworks, the, some of the things that have been referenced, uh, won't be impeded, they will see the roof of, of the, that unit of those houses up on that eastern side, that's, that's absolutely true. However, no underwear to underwear, um, you know, there, uh, is gonna happen because the window level of the third floor on that uphill house is below the ground level of the adjacent residents up on, um, on, thank you, Chan, thank you, Eric, Championship. Too, I don't, I don't want to pretend that they won't see the roof, they will, but it recedes away from you in space, as somebody very adequately explained that, holding it here, holding it there, it makes a big difference. Um, the, then the, um, the other thing I want to mention is that as the houses go down the hill, uh, they get lower and lower, until they're down by the existing apartments, there's a lot of two-story buildings, the two-story buildings have garages, so there's a lot of, of, uh, it's upscale for apartment living, is to have a garage with a direct entry into your house. That's, um, that's a very, um, desirable characteristic to have. So that's, that's the way that the, the shapes and the difference houses got to be where they are, and getting them to settle in the right place in that landscape.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Dan, for, for that. So, um, any other questions that you all have while I'm, I'm here?
Questions of the applicant? All right, hearing none?
If, if not, then let me just, again, I want a sincere thank you to Eric, it's all voluntary here, uh, uh, all the folks coming in, but I really want to ask for your support, uh, tonight, uh, to be recommended to the city council with your approval. This is a project, we, we need to stay on time because we need to get, we want the golf course open by the end of the year. The growing season is something that we can't control, we need to be growing our, our turfs through the summertime, and we cannot afford a delay because, uh, to do so, we're pushing it a full year out, and, and keep, we just can't do that. So I, I'm asking for, for your support tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. With that, we will, uh, close the public hearing.
Just want to make sure that you, uh, the commission doesn't have any more questions of either the applicant or staff before we start deliberations.
No questions of staff or the applicant? All right. Then, as I said, with that, we'll close the public hearing. We've had an anonymous request for a five-minute break, I'm gonna grant that. So in five minutes, we will come back and deliberate. Very much, this time we'll reconvene the meeting and commence deliberation. Anybody like to make any comments? Observations, thoughts?
Well, um, I think it's a very clever way of looking at this. Uh, I'm impressed with, uh, the restaurant, the after-school program, and other things. It's not just, uh, the apartments, I mean, there, there's a lot of thought that went into this to try and make it successful, it's not all the eggs in one basket. And I was really thankful about that last discussion of the, the sightlines, and that made it clearer than the photographs, I mean, than the drawings that we saw. So those are just some of my observations.
Thank you, anybody else?
Yeah.
Commissioner Sims?
Yeah, I, um, I, I'm, I'm in support of this project, the, uh, I, uh, used to frequent Quail Ranch, if anybody ever remembered that goat track, but, uh, then, uh, and Moreno, Moreno Valley Ranch was just a fantastic course, the Nike Tour would come through, and they'd really have that thing all fluffed up, it was really nice. Um, it, it was bad that they let that thing go, and it was, it was a slow decay as well that it was, I, if I would've lived in that neighborhood, I would've been furious to, to see, see that go down. I think that... Pardon me. Yeah, there, there's really no perfect solution to, to all problems, but I, I think what we have here is, is I, I, somebody had mentioned that this is probably a, it, it's as close to a win that, win that you can have, there's no guarantees, there's no guarantees that the apartment complex is gonna, uh, project is gonna be a success, it, it probably is, I wouldn't imagine they would be doing this if they didn't think it would be. There's no guarantees that the golf course will be a success, but I think if the community does get behind having the golf course back there, it has a greater chance for being successful. And I think the addition with the Boys and Girl Club with the PGA, I think that's a great amenity, I, I think part and parcel, a lot of the problems is, 'cause kids don't have anything to do but just watch YouTube or whatever they do and, and do their thing. but just watch YouTube or whatever they do and do their thing. And the last thing is, is I, I think having 417 more homes in this part of the, part of the city is very important. We've had problems at Stone Ridge getting enough development in there to support, support that facility. And I think you have the medical, that, that whole complex out there along, out there needs, needs more help. And more people brings more services, and more services brings more income to the city. And I think it just makes us prosper, so I, I'm fully supportive of this.
Anyone else? Yes?
Yeah. I had some reservations, and I did have a lot of concerns. I did go out there and saw firsthand how deteriorated and how bad it is. Just weeds everywhere, you can't even call it grass. And broken sidewalks and, but I did have reservations as to the size of the apartments that were going in there. But after hearing everybody and seeing, you know, they live out there. And this is basically their little oasis. And it's not just a win-win for them. It would be win-win for the community because it would help a lot of the kids. They don't have a lot of things to do, and like you said, the Boys Club and partnering with them. And I'm, I did have concerns back, and they were negative, actually. But after listening and hearing all the residents and hearing everybody's concerned and hearing the way the developer is doing this, I'm in favor of it, too.
Anybody else?
Yes. I also have to say that in the beginning, I did have some concerns, and many of my questions were answered. The street lights and, and some of the things that were going to go in to assist with this, with the city and the positive things that are going to occur. I, I, I want to say that I'm actually impressed by the comments made by many of the residents in their support of the developer and their, and their just positive feelings about how the developer has listened and, and made changes and made some adjustments to try to accommodate the residents. That, that's very impressive. And I do also feel that you turn left, you turn right, everybody is not going to be happy, no matter what changes the developer makes. So I'm, I'm very happy to, to hear some of the comments, and I'm very impressed by some of the comments that were made.
Mr. Harris?
Okay, I, I was up on Champion on Spyglass Hill. And I really do feel bad for all the people that had that unbelievable view from up there. But the only thing I can see is the view is only going to decay and get worse. And now we have a chance to improve that, and so I support the project. And anyway, that's all I have to say.
Anyone else? I, I'd like to make one observation. Actually, I have a question of Chris. Could you clarify what items the developer is mandated to do that are outside the apartment project itself? My understanding is there's basically two things. There's the golf course being operational, and there's the maintenance fund.
That is correct. Right. The golf course would need to be operational before issuance of a first building permit for the project. And then there would be the maintenance fund, which, as described, would be for a ten-year period with the amount that Eric described was 2.5 million, I believe is.
Okay. The other, the other things that have been discussed are at the developer's discretion. And I'm not doubting his word at all, and I agree with all of you. I think it's a terrific project, but I just wanted to make sure everyone was clear that the only things that are in black and white are those two things. So, that being said, I agree also. It's the right time. It's, seems to be well thought out, and I, I would agree. It, it seems to be the right thing to do.
Me, too. I'd like to make a motion, move forward with this, if we could.
I won't stand in your way.
I move that we approve resolution number 2018-17, and also 2018-18, and then 2018-19, then 2018-20, and then 20-18-21, and finally, 2018-22. And thereby recommend to the City of Moreno Valley Council to take action.
That's official, Paul?
Yes, it is.
Very good. We have a motion?
I'll second.
It was second by Commissioner Korzak? Please vote.
You're on me.
Uh-oh. One more. Not yet. Try again. Didn't work. There we go. Very good. Motion carries seven to zero. Very much. Congratulations to the applicant, and welcome to the city. All right. Moving on. Staff wrap-up?
Yes, Chair Barnes. Planning staff will be forwarding this to the city council for deliberation at its earliest available hearing.
Thank you. Let's see. I don't know about that. Any planning commissioner comments?
I'm glad we have continuity at the chair and vice chair. That's a good job. Got us through another one.
Yeah, barely. Stumbled. All right. Anything else? Well, I think that concludes our, yes. I'd like to adjourn tonight's meeting to the next regularly scheduled meeting on April 26, 2018, 7:00 PM in these chambers. Good night, everyone.
Good night.